Call the meeting to order 601 on 6/17/2025. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Ridge.
Present.
Mayor Protem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor James Mosby.
Calling for oral communication on the closed session item. We have one item in closed session today. That's conference with labor negotiators. Uh, geez, with everybody and about the LPOA. See, nobody rise for oral communications. We'll close that and we will move into closed session. You guys ready? All right. Let's call this meeting to order. Lompoc City Council meeting of June 17th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ball.
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Bridge.
Here.
Mayor Protem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor James Mosby.
Present. So those of you guys haven't already, go ahead and silence those phones. Sometimes people forget that and we don't need Christmas chimes and everything else going off here today. All right, uh, city attorney, report on action from closed session.
Yes, Mayor. City council met in closed session tonight to discuss the one labor negotiation item on the agenda with the Police Officers Association. Council gave direction to staff on that, but there was no report of action.
Very good. Anita. Where's Anita?
Right here.
Come on down. Please please join me, stand, join me in an invocation for Anita Freeman. And the Pledge of Allegiance to follow that shortly.
Praise to you, Lord our God, who is the universe, who has created us and sustained us and enabled us to reach this evening. We thank you for the gifts you have given us that allow us to serve our community. For you have given us eyes with which to see a vision of a brighter future for Lompoc. May she grow in strength. You have given us ears to hear the voices of reason and change that are so necessary for our personal and communal growth. You have given us the gift of smell to take in the fragrant scent of flowers as we honor our city's flower industry. You have given us minds so that we may discern between what is right and what is wrong, to distinguish between stagnation and growth. And God, you have also given us hearts to love what we do, to love the people we serve, and to love and revere your holy name. Please implant within the hearts and minds of all a steadfast purpose to work for the safeguarding of freedom, justice, and peace. We ask your blessings for our city's leaders and advisors, for all who exercise just and rightful authority. Grant them insights from your teachings that they may be, that they may administer all affairs of our city wisely. Grant to all those here tonight such wisdom, understanding, and resolve that they may make the best decisions to lead our city in justice and righteousness. Blessed are you, Lord our God, to whom we offer our eternal thanks and praise, and let us say amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so presentations, so I did a Juneteenth presentation last Saturday, so that one's completed. And the next is a certificate, a congratulation to retired police officer Eric Andreessen. Please join me at the podium. So it gives me great pleasure, 32 years.
So 33.
33 of service to the city of Lompoc. I know a lot of you have run into him, he's run into you and found you in a lot of different ways, but um, I've seen him out on the street many years and what a great job he did. One of my most favorite times that I did on council before was I did a 12-hour shift with you at night. Learned a lot and a lot of fun, a lot of fun and the experience that you go through and the uh, you know.
The ride along.
Oh, the ride along, yeah, it was uh, it was a very good time. But Eric, it gives me great pleasure um, to present to you this plaque. Let me read it to you. So Eric Andreessen, police officer, in appreciation for his years of service to the city of Lompoc and its citizens, from 9/19/1992 to 11/24/95 as a reserve, and for November 25th, 1995 to May 30th, 2025. So I have this, this plaque for you as well as surprise, fat in the pocket, the city manager, right? The commemorative silver coin, the city of Lompoc, so, you know? Thank you. Want something to say? Come on in here. Make your brief.
Don't make your brief. Well, um, I'm honored to be here today. Mayor Mosby, city council, community members, family, mom, dad, my daughter's parents, Savannah's, and the members of my department. I want to say thank you, especially to the Lord, to you believing me and pushing me to go the distance. It's been a great ride, wonderful memories, met a lot of good people, and I take home a lot of memories. And as I sit back in my lazy boy chair, watching reruns of Cops and Chips, I'll be thinking of everyone, our police, our fire, our nurses, our doctors, our city council, linemen, and our community. I pray that you get to go home every night and you make it to your retirement celebration. So thank you, Lord, thank you, family, thank you, everyone. And 54 Paul 1 and 10:10. Thank you.
Good luck.
Don't lose that coin, I swear.
Never. City managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. So one thing I wanted to start off with is I wanted to thank the Conservation Division. I don't think you got the right picture up, Emily. There's nothing on the screen, Emily. There you go, and then next slide. I want to thank our conservation, they helped um, the museum do energy efficient lighting. It's been about 25 years since we've lit up those globes and I think if you know that, if you have a chance, do the history on this, it's really cool. This is originally our library from Carnegie, there's about 120 or so around throughout the United States, beautiful building. It's good to see it be restored a little. I want to take a moment, I'm happy to share that the Lompoc Beautification and Appearance Commission has announced the winners for the 2025 Spring Beautification Contest. And one of our top honors goes to that one at the top there from 421 North Seventh Street. I want to thank everybody who does their yard like that and everybody who participated in the voting and everything. It's good to see our, improve our neighborhoods. This week, June 16th through the 20th, is the Waste and Recycling Workers Week. So I wanted to say thank you to all the guys, I did a demolition this year and I got to meet all these guys and great group and I appreciate what they do for us of the city. Applications for a block party are available now for 4th of July. You can do a private party, neighborhood street closure, and you have to get 75% of the residents in that area that are going to be impacted to approve, but you can also do a private block party if you want to just do it at your house, they're $60. And you could go to the Anderson Rec Center and apply for one of those and they have a step-by-step instructions on how to get that done. They also have, on the 200 West Ocean Avenue, they'll have a place where you can light your safe and sound, sane fireworks. We've had a few people get scammed on, they're posing as city employees calling and saying that they, they owe on their bill or they pay it now or they're going to cut them off. We're never going to do that, so if you guys get that call, hang up, call back, number's 875-8255. Only thing we ever do is mailers, we'll do door hangers, but we will not cold call you, so don't get scammed. We'll be having extended hours at the Aquatic Center from 1 to 3, August through, June 9th through August 10th. And then also I want to remind everybody that Thursday is the Juneteenth holiday. A lot of City Hall, Lompoc Library, the landfill, solid waste office, and hazardous waste will be closed. The Aquatic Center will be open, so you can do that extended swim from 1 to 3. People who usually get picked up on Thursday trash will have to wait till Friday and then Friday will be Saturday. And I just want to remind everybody that June 26th through the 29th will be the Flower Festival. It'll be a parade June 28th at 10 a.m. Children 12 and up are $7, children ages 6 to 11 are $5, children under 5 are free. And also Thursday and Friday before 1, you can get in for free and go check out a lunch or something. And then finally, I wanted to thank the officers that provided mutual aid during the No King Protest in LA. Thank you guys for keeping us safe and volunteering to do that, and that's all I have, sir.
Okay. And I think tomorrow there's a Public Safety Commission meeting, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. Who brings us down to public comment on consent calendar? Consent calendar, normal customary items that should only have voted on in one vote? Does anybody on council wish to poll any of the items?
Mayor, I have an announcement on one of the items.
Okay.
Item number six is the stale dated checks item. We had a last-minute person come and fill out a form to claim their check. So that's Rosario Perry, it's in the amount of $2,000. So we're changing the staff recommendation to remove that check from the list. They're Rosario Perry and $2,000.
So I'll read into the record, you got something, Councilmember Starbuck?
Mr. Malway, I have a quick question. Somebody contacted me and I sent them down here on Monday, they're out of the country right now, it's a $119 check, is there a way they could retrieve that when they come
Sorry.
I'm going to refer that question to the Management Services Director.
So if, if we have a name and, and that information, we can go ahead and...
Lompoc Thrift, it's listed on the staff report, Lompoc Thrift is the name of it.
Okay. We can go ahead and set that aside if that is something that we, that council is willing to allow us to do, we can, we can go ahead and take that one off of the list as well.
Do I need to add a council request on that?
You just make it part of the motion when you approve the consent calendar to remove that one.
Okay, the items on the consent calendar, approval of minutes from April 1st, 2025. And number two is approval and ratification of expenditures for payroll, May 23rd, 2025 of $2,083,000. And a voucher register for May 12th through 16th, 2025 of $876,000 and change. And a voucher register for May 19th to 23rd of 2025 for 1.4 million and change. Number three is the adoption of Resolution 6754, parentheses, 25, authorizing the filing of, filing of the Transportation Development Act claim for fiscal year 2526. Number four, adoption of Resolution 675625, setting the fiscal year 2025, 2026, GAN appropriation limitation. Number five, adoption of Resolution 675725, approving the annual operations and maintenance plan for fiscal year 2526. Number six, adoption of Resolution 675825, transferring unclaimed properties, stale dated checks to the general fund. You guys might want to look and see, there could have been a check on there for somebody you knew, but it's happening fast. Number seven, adoption of Resolution number 675925, ordering the levy of special taxes for fiscal year 2526 within Community Facilities District number 218-01, some of you homes. And number eight, adoption of Resolution 676025, amending anger tie and tie-down rental rates at Lompoc Airport. If anyone on council want to poll any of those items or any further discussion?
You can mention the modification.
I didn't make a motion to approve yet, but I was seeing if anybody else, anything else to add? Nope? Somebody want to make a motion? Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion, we accept consent calendar and consent calendar, item six, that we hold the two checks for the two people that wish to come in and claim them.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a...
My button doesn't work, but I'll second it.
Motion by...
Nobody's made a motion.
Councilmember Starbuck has the motion?
He had it made, he made the motion.
Seconded by Vega? So let's go ahead and vote. Plan says 5-0. So, next is an oral communications. That's for anything that's not on the agenda, that people have something to say about in the community. It's items that's not on the agenda. Well, my question, if you, if you're looking for something, if you're going to talk about the chamber, is a budgetary item on the end of the meeting? We do have a budgetary item. You can stay to the, item number 14, the new business component, which is a budgetary item?
You can speak now, or you can...
All right, so how many people want to come in and speak about the chamber? Okay, so for those who want to speak about the chamber, I am going to reduce the public comment down to one minute per speaker because of the line of the speakers that we have?
Nooo. 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 Nooo.
Mayor. City Attorney.
Thank you. It is within the discretion of the chair to reduce the time due to the number of people in the room, but we should reduce it for everyone, no matter what they want to speak on, so it's one minute for everyone.
All right. So the oral communication is seeing the number of people who want to speak, please.
If we wait until item 16, will we have our three minutes?
No.
No. What we, it's, we only have a limited amount of time to get through everything we have at the meeting, so it is the prerogative of the chair. If you guys want to stay here five hours, it's not something we need to say. I think you guys, okay, so for those of you guys who haven't been to a meeting before, it's not, it's not a free-for-all in the meetings, okay?
We just want to make it fair, Mayor.
Well, it's, I'll make it very fair, but it is the prerogative of the chair to do the minute.
Doesn't make it right, so...
Doesn't make it right.
Okay, my name is Mark Harryer, Lompoc Theater Project. I applaud your efforts to balance the budget, and I think it's important. However, if it weren't for the chamber, Lompoc Theater Project would not exist. They supported us...
All right. Nooo. Nooo.
I only have a minute. So they supported us, they supported us from, from the very beginning with meetings. We got a check for $5,481 when we were doing tip of waiter nights, which was fundamental in us going. We are about to do our Phase Two, we're going to spend $3 million this next year, that would pay for that budget alone. Something more might be going on, but I just want to tell you, you need to do what you need to do, but we also need the chamber. This town needs both of you to be strong and supportive for us to survive. So hug it out, go to the table, and, and I, I hope you guys can work this out because we need you both desperately.
So for those of you guys who haven't been here before, again, we refrain, if you guys want to quietly celebrate, but we don't do the clapping, right? You get, whatever you want to call it, fingers and there we go. Councilmember Ball demonstrated for us, but likewise, because we don't allow the booing aspect either, so just keep it civil at the table.
Aaron Crocker, Lompoc. I had something else prepared, but since I only have a minute, I'm, I'm just going to rush through it. I am here in support of the chamber, but more than that, I'm here in support of the right way to do things. I think cutting us to a minute already is, is just a show of what this council is about, and it's about not hearing from the people. And a great example of that was the last meeting when Councilmember Bridge introduced a whole new plan that wasn't even on the agenda for the chamber's budget without talking to anybody. And it, the slides that he put up had misspellings and frankly, it was embarrassing. Okay? So for the chamber to not be involved in that discussion and the public not to know about it, it's not a good look. Regardless of the funding and the tax and the legality and everything else, I understand that, let's have a discussion about it, let's let the public know, and let's not just cut funding for an organization that supports this community. Thank you.
You guys...
I had also prepared something a little longer, but my name is Suada Lopez Avala. I'm a very involved committee member here and I'm the newly appointed chair for the chamber. I don't think it's fair, but more than anything, I will read you this part that I prepared. I understand the need for financial balance and self-sufficiency. I'm not opposed to progress, I'm advocating for fairness, for dialogue, and transparency. A broadly pooling vital fundings without communication sends a wrong message, not just to our organization, but to small businesses owners, the students, military families, and not, and all the volunteers who see the chamber as a cornerstone for the community connection. I respectfully just ask you to reconsider. Let's rebuild the conversation and work together towards a better solution, something that strengthens Lompoc and not we can say more.
Hi, councilmembers, my name's Fatima. I came all the way from LA to speak with y'all. I was raised in Lompoc. I'm also an alum of the Youth Leadership Lompoc Valley, class of 2013. And so I'd like to begin by respecting the challenge before you. I work in sales, I work for a workforce development company, I'm constantly talking with business owners and decision makers every day about how to prioritize their spending and to make time for training. So I understand firsthand the tough calls you're being asked to make. Youth Leadership Lompoc Valley wasn't just a feel-good program for me, it was formative. It inspired me to create and lead the annual Teaching Our Teens as Leaders Conference, commonly known as TOTAL, in 2014, because I saw how powerful it was to equip young people with a sense of purpose and direction. That initiative grew directly out of what the chamber made possible, the belief that youth aren't just the future, they're the present. That experience stayed with me. Today, I work to support those very same blue collar industries I was introduced to by the chamber. But the chamber does more than support the youth, they foster a sense of economic stability for the people trying to build something here. They connect entrepreneurs to resources, they help small businesses navigate that tape. They don't just promote commerce, they protect away a life. Defunding the chamber may look like a cut on paper, but what truly be cutting is a pipeline to civic responsibility and homegrown leadership. So I just ask you to protect this investment, not just for tradition's sake, but for Lompoc's future workforce, economy, and community.
Yanko, and I recently graduated from the Leadership of Lompoc Valley, class of 2025. I'm here today to express my disappointment at the shutdown of the chamber. Through the Commerce, the LLB program has been able to thrive and support a diverse learning community. We were given the opportunity to tour places like the Lompoc Prison, local health centers, the Space Force Base, Lompoc Schools, and more local gems to gain a deeper understanding of Lompoc and learn how we could contribute our resources and knowledge to helping the community. Through learning about the community of Lompoc, our class was able to come together from all different backgrounds and occupations to create a project that would support Lompoc teens and their basic needs at the Lompoc Teen Center. The project is to create a wellness closet, complete with a washer and dryer, hygiene supplies, and school supplies for young people who do not have access to such supplies at home or in other places in their life. The vessel through which this has been able to occur is the Commerce. The Commerce affects real change in the community and has the potential to impact even more people if provided with the proper support. Leadership of Lompoc Valley is only one of these programs that the shutting down of the LCC would end. The canceling of Old Town Market will undoubtedly impact small business owners and meaningful organizations who seek to share their valuable resources with those who may not be able to access them otherwise. This decision would cause a cultural hub to dissolve in a town where there are not many outlets for you to be in. I ask you today to please reconsider your decision to shut down the Chamber of Commerce or outline a way in which these programs and events can be maintained and funded for other needs. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Jasmine, and this is Anna, and we are the Pot Mamas. We've worked with the chamber for a few years, primarily Divica, and she's incredible. The vote was pushed through after a public comment was closed, without giving the community a chance to speak up. That's not just bad process, it's a breach of the public's trust. We elect officials to uphold rules, not bend them, to push through controversial decisions without community input. This isn't about a line item, it's about how you treat the people you represent. There are no pens out there to fill out the card to talk. It's about the people, the very community you work for. So tonight, we're asking this council to do better, revisit the decision, respect the process that ensures accountability. We deserve transparency, we deserve participation. Reconsider that decision. We're watching. I hate public speaking, but when you're inside of the community, you make up your voice.
Guys, we don't want people booing or clapping, just you guys got your ways of celebrating, thank you.
Tracy Beard, Solving Chamber of Commerce. I support the Lompoc Chamber of Commerce, known as a neighborhood partner, as a vital economic engine to this community. Lompoc is the third largest city in the county. It needs to have a chamber, a dedicated voice. We need a downtown economic driver. Remember, they made your tax program happen when your person that was here last, Amber Wilson, she made sure through surveys, through advocacy, that that tax program went through for $3 million for this organization. She saved you $75,000 on a consultant. Give this chamber an opportunity to show what they can do. They are a partner. You need to make sure that chambers survive. Let's not be the city council that defunded and shut down a Chamber of Commerce. Remember, you can be the one that saved it and be a partner to that organization.
My name is Anne McCarty. I am honored to have been named the 2018 Lompoc Woman of the Year, and more recently, the 2025 recipient of the Dick DeWes Leadership Award. I don't share these recognitions to boast, those who know me understand I'm probably one of the most humble and private people you'll meet. But these honors given to me by the Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce and Leadership Lompoc Valley, a program born of the chamber, hold deep meaning to me, and I'm truly grateful. As the executive director of a local nonprofit, I know how hard the funding struggle is, but to pull the rug out from under an organization without warning, that's not just bad business, it's disrespectful. But because you've tried to silence me, let me just leave with this. The chamber has been a vital part of this community since 1903. With your four-to-one vote, you have effectively erased the importance of that legacy. I don't see how that feels good. And to be honest, if I were in your position, I'd be ashamed. And to be honest, if I were in your position, I'd be ashamed.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Brandy Bailey, and I'm proud to say that I'm a recent graduate of the Leadership Lompoc Valley, class of 2425. This year marked the fortieth anniversary of this incredible program, a milestone that speaks volumes about its continued relevance and impact in our community. Though I've lived in Lompoc my entire life, this program opened my eyes to just how much I didn't know about our local businesses, services, and everyday heroes who keep our community running. LLV has provided me and so many others with invaluable insights into the heart of our city. Each month, we had the opportunity to dive deep into different areas, including business economics, media, communication, health and human services, cultural enrichment, public safety, local government, education, military airspace, and agriculture. We even had a mid-year check-in to reflect and refocus. Through these topic days, I learned about the challenges our city faces, the resources available, and the passionate individuals who serve Lompoc with dedication. But beyond the knowledge gained, what's perhaps even more powerful is the connection. LLV brings people together, cultivates leaders from within our city, leaders who love this community and want to see it thrive while preserving the closeness small towns here we all cherish. As someone who has benefited deeply from this experience, I urge you to continue funding the Chamber of Commerce and specifically this leadership program. LLV is not just an investment.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Lisa Rankin. I'm the director of the Lompoc Museum, so I'm here to talk about the museum, not the chamber. And before I get into that, I wanted to say thanks for putting the photo up of the museum building. It looks fabulous with the lights out front, and I'd like a little bit of leeway if we can. We're buying pendant lights, period-appropriate pendant lights, the museum is, and I just got a bid back saying that they're on four- to six-week order, so we wouldn't make the August 13th deadline maybe, so I'm hoping to get a little reprieve. Now I only have 21 seconds left to make my pitch for the museum. So the museum has been around in the Carnegie Building since 1969. The city had an agreement with the Clarence Ruth family to accept the collection, an incredible collection of Schumacher artifacts, probably the largest in any museum on the west coast. Oops. Now, so the museum also, as we bring it over to the city, we received a yearly stipend. I didn't see the museum in.
I'm the superintendent president at Allen Hancock College, and I'm here professionally and personally. Our college is a close partner with the chamber. We have worked with the chamber on the downtown Friday night Lompoc events for the last several years, investing our staff time and making sure that that's published and participated in. We also are actively involved with them for programs like Future for Lompoc Youth, Leadership Lompoc Valley, and we've been expanding programs in the Lompoc Valley to ensure that this community is being served. Personally, I also serve on the boards for Santa Maria Chamber and Solving Chamber, and we, on both of those chamber boards, we went through transitions with new city council members and new leadership, that there was some friction. I have no idea what the friction is between these two, but what I do know from those two is when the chamber sat down and met with the city and worked out their differences, both the cities and the chambers thrive, and the business community thrive as well. Thank you.
Dang, I have to cut this in half. The chamber having to close their doors as a result of their funding being cut by this council will have a profound effect on many of us moving forward. It's my understanding that the city will be sponsoring Old Town Market this year, after it was made clear people weren't happy that the chambers was having to cancel it due to the cut in funding. How much is it costing the city to hold it? Who's overseeing it? I'm not in finance or anything, but my instincts are telling me that the Chamber of Commerce can do it for a lesser cost. What about going forward and all the other events put on by the chamber? I know small businesses owners who will be affected by this as well. Lastly, I'm glad the Flower Festival is a nonprofit, because it seems that might become the only thing that we have going on in the future. I implore you to bring this discussion back and reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Honorable mayor and council members, my name is Heather Wolsey, and I am here today as a board member and proud graduate of Leadership Lompoc Valley. The Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce has long been an economic and civic engine for our city, supporting over 300 local businesses and nonprofits through events, tourism, workforce development, and direct business services. Much of that is made possible by the city's annual contribution of 108,000, which represents 40% of the chamber's operating budget. Without city support, sustaining these core programs becomes increasingly difficult, and what's at risk is more than just a budget line. Leadership Lompoc Valley and its youth program, community events that bring residents downtown, business advocacy and visitor services no one else provides, and the Military Affairs Committee supporting ties to Vandenberg Space Force Base, which is a $1.7 billion regional economic driver. This is not a bailout, it's a strategic investment for less than 0.2% of the city's general fund, representing only $2.40 per resident.
How you guys doing today? My name is Orion Welch. I'm here on behalf of the Wyoming State and also as a concerned citizen. You all joined the city council to serve this community, I'm sure, and I believe it, but how can you sit here and say you're gonna serve the community when you strip the very thing that keeps it alive? They're not just responsible for Old Town Market, but many other individuals who thrive off of the Chamber of Commerce, and yet you strip it. For what reason? By such an egregious amount, with any lack of clarity whatsoever? This city was built on trust, loyalty, and community. Where's the trust? How can we trust you as our council members to represent what's best for us? Right now, it seems to best represent personal matters rather than the community you serve. I don't have anything up here to write, I'm just looking at you in your eyes. You have to look at them in their eyes. This is the community you serve. I suggest you do that. Thank you.
I am James O'Crade, the pastor at TruVine Bible Fellowship and Mayor Mosby. I did some research, and I found that the origin of your name comes from the mixture of the Old English and the French, and the word ultimately means, at the end of the day, a farmstead village would suggest community. When we look at the Bible, and the Bible is relevant here because we opened up tonight in prayer, the Bible says in Genesis, chapter 1, verse 26, God said, "Let us, community, create man and woman in our likeness and image." In Ecclesiastes, chapter 4, verse number nine, it says, "Two are better than one for they get a greater return on their work." That's community. In Ecclesiastes, chapter 4, verse 12, it says, "Three cords of a strand is not easily broken." That's community. From the very core of who you are and your surname, you are community. From the very core of what the chamber represents and who they are, they're the backbone of this community. Devika Stollan is the backbone of this community. And the Bible says to us that we should move in justice, and I'm encouraging you tonight, under the eyes of God, and to the core of your name, give this chamber justice.
Good evening, council members and fellow residents. My name is Jasmine Dawson, executive director for C4, Collective Cultures Create Change, and I also won Woman of the Year. The recent decisions surrounding the funding and support of our Chamber of Commerce have left many of us asking, why would we consider diminishing something so vital to our city's The chamber is more than an office, it's a symbol of connection, a space for innovation, and a partner in our future. Let us not let short-term decisions create long-term setbacks. Let's work together to ensure Lompoc is a space where families thrive, children see a future, and businesses are proud to call home. And we want to diminish the name that we received some years ago, being the armpit of the Santa Barbara County. We have proved in so many ways that we're far beyond that, and we want to make progression so we can have a better name and community for ourselves. You guys are representative of the city of Lompoc. Let's put our heads together and try to dissolve this issue that's so much needed. Thank you.
Nick Niklenko, resident of Lompoc. So are we in such dire straits that we need to cut the funding to something that advocates for our businesses, for our small businesses? An organization that helps businesses navigate the red tape created by City Hall, created by the people in offices here at City Hall, the budget, everything, all the red tape that goes into opening small businesses? Are we really in a position where we need to eliminate that? We are about 20 miles off Highway 1, off a major freeway. We need advocacy to get businesses in our community. We need people come off Highway 101 to come into Lompoc. So save the chamber. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Leanne Wooliver. I'm a concerned citizen. I'm also a board member of Youth Leadership Lompoc Valley. And I wanted a few concerning things that have happened this past year. I've been in Youth Leadership Lompoc Valley, Board of Directors, this will be my third year coming up, and I've been very concerned about the chamber and mismanagement of funds, and them not supporting Youth Leadership Lompoc Valley like they have in the past. They have not supported us. I think I've seen Devika one time out of the, over two years I've been part of Youth Leadership Lompoc Valley at one of our board member meetings. It's a concern. We need to work as a team. Negotiations are coming up for the Lompoc Police and Fire Department. We, as a city, need to make sure that we cover the costs.
You guys. Thank you.
Good evening, Lompoc. My name is Marissa Martinez. I'm a local Realtor, former educator, longtime resident, and small business owner. As a stakeholder of the Lompoc Chamber of Commerce, I'm here tonight to express my deep concern over the potential loss of the chamber and what it means for our community. Over the past week, I met with both the chamber and the city council members. What became clear is that there's a breakdown in communication and transparency. The chamber shared what they requested in funding, and the city responded with a different offer. Yes, there's a gap, but more than that, there's a lack of willingness to come together and work it out. It's disheartening to know that neither side has made any effort to have a direct conversation. I was able to connect with both, and I'm just a citizen. There's no reason leadership can't do the same, especially when so much is at stake. Let's be clear, losing our chamber doesn't just hurt a few, it hurts all of us. Small businesses suffer. Community connections, economic opportunity declines, and frankly, it reflects poorly on the city of Lompoc. When the city doesn't stand behind the institutions that support businesses, it sends a message that we're not a priority. Our chamber is operating with one staff member doing a job of many. Instead of pointing fingers, we should be asking how we can help. Yes, maybe the chamber needs restructuring, but it doesn't need to walk away. Let's support it now and build long-term sustainability. I also believe that God puts every situation in our lives for a reason. This experience has opened my eyes, and I hope it's opened others. Let this be a moment we come together, not just tonight, but consistently to protect something that's done so much for us. Thank you.
My name is Zach Carlo. I'm a Lompoc resident and a graduate of LLV. Thank you guys for your time, and citizens of Lompoc, great you're all here. I did not come prepared, but as a graduate of Leadership Lompoc Valley, I've seen the impact on this community and the things that they do for everyone. It's affected me, my family, my wife, and made a huge impact on all of us. They work really hard to bring everybody together and make an impact on this little town. We're not as heard as much as we should be. We're looked down upon because we're not Santa Barbara, and they're really trying to make an effort here to bring light to this town and bring more business and impact this community, and help out students come back to this community and be impacted. So that's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Never once have I approached the chamber with a concern or request and been told that they could only give me 60 seconds of apathy while dressed for a luau before they would ignore me anyway. Unless you intend to start actively listening to your voters and helping them with actual care, you need them as much as we need them. Let the amount of people in this room right now be your indicator that you are straying from what your community stands for.
Good evening, I'm also not prepared, and I don't have any special position in town, I'm just a voter. My partner owns a small business, he wasn't unable to speak here this evening, and this, earlier you asked God to help show you the difference between stagnation and growth. My partner's business opened its doors in the height of stagnation during the pandemic, and one of the first, and on the middle of all that social isolation, one of the first events that was able to bring the whole community together was the Chamber's Small Business Saturday, which they participated in. So I'm just here to say, save the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
My name is Ash. I work as a contractor at Vandenberg Space Force Base. I've lived in Lompoc since 2019. I decided to stay in Lompoc after my ex-husband got out of the military because I love the community and the small businesses that are here. I have a 15- and 6-year-old, and they attend things like the Boys and Girls Club, we love to go to PJ's Deli, my son gets his haircut at Jay's Barber Shop. The Chamber of Commerce is needed to keep small businesses alive. That's your future, that's my kids' future. I don't want to have to move back because small businesses aren't welcome because the Chamber of Commerce isn't there to help. I think that you guys should listen to the people that are sitting here and that voted for you to be in the positions that you're in. Your position's gonna be taken away as easily as you receive them. This is earned, this is not a privilege, this is not a right. Or it is a privilege, excuse me, it's not a right.
My tongue doesn't get tangled this time around. I'm Kathy Howard. I need to maybe let you know that I'm a graduate of Lompoc High School, class of 1963, that's a while back. I'm on the board, an alumni board of the association for the high school. Those of you who are graduates, go online, please, and join, it's only 30 bucks. But I want to remind you that when you don't like what someone is doing or an organization is doing, one of the things you need to do first is talk to them and counsel them and see if you can fix it. And I would hope that you maybe would put an effort in for that. Also remind you that everything you do here ricochets throughout this small community, and you're ricocheting on the Alumni Association's ability to give scholarships to graduates of the high school. When we don't have coverage for the car cruise that comes in July, we don't make the bulk of our money, and we need the chamber and all the other things that go along with it to help us get the.
Please remember that we passed a tax increase, and we expect to get a little bit more throttle.[1791.76]
up.
Mama, I'm here because I'm a businesswoman, and the Chamber of Commerce is the heart of a business. The Chamber of Commerce stimulates the other businesses, gives ideas, gives comfort, gives strength to do better. So I promise you, it's not just your job to help the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you very much to help everybody. We need this business to stay together. We all need to help, volunteer, do anything to give the Chamber the opening house. I see every day Larry Turdis, they come to Mama Cafe, they ask me, what time do they open? Are they open? So I said, don't worry, come in. I tell you where to go. Go to the mission, go to the, see, you know, anything around. What are the flowers? We don't see any flowers. I say, come in. I buy flowers every day around the restaurant. Do you want anything to know? But we need the Chamber to help everything for Lompoke. We need the Chamber because it's the heart of a business.
Yeah, Mama.
And council member, my name is Cliff Lambert. I'm the founder of the Lompoke Teen Center. I must say, I didn't anticipate coming here, but I have been a strong advocate for youth for over 50 years in Santa Barbara County. And one of the things that I realize is that the Chamber of Commerce is a critical piece in every city. And let's not take it for granted, you need to try to figure out how to put your differences aside and do what's best for this community. I'm vested in the community. I live in Santa and its valley. I have poured my heart and soul into this community in Lompoke because I believe in it. I believe in it. The Chamber is a critical piece of that new age that needs to come alive in Lompoke. And it's critically important that you support the Chamber, you support DAVICA.
And know that you have the ability to go back, reevaluate your budget and make the tough decision, and you have the capability of doing that. This is not the end all. I'm asking you to search your heart, do what is right, and I pray that truth will prevail. So God bless you, and God bless DAVICA and the Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, council members and fellow community members. I come here before you not just as a concerned citizen, but as someone who believes deeply in the values of fairness, transparency, service to our community. What's happening with the Lompoke Chamber of Commerce is more than a contract decision. It's a defining moment of this city and its leadership. From early on, it became clear that there were growing tensions between the city and the Chamber. One council member appointed as the city's liaison to the Chamber Board did not attend any board meetings during his tenure. The absent matters. Because effective partnerships are built on communication, presence, and shared goals. Public records obtained through the Freedom of Information Act suggest that the move to end the Chamber contract was not primarily about financial responsibility or performance concerns, but rather part of a direction taken without open dialogue or collaborative problem solving with the Chamber. Decisions that impact our local economy and community cohesion deserve transparency and public input. There are also personal dynamics that at a minimum raise questions. Concerns have circulated through the community about whether past disagreements or perceived slights influence this process, including frustration over past political endorsements or differing positions on public incentives. While everyone brings personal experience to their role, public office demands that decisions rise above individual history and focus solely on the public good. In the past couple of weeks, we've seen a wave of social media attacks that have stirred division and cast doubt, not based on facts, but fueled by reaction to the decision made by this council at your last meeting. These posts have focused on the actual contents of the vote or the implications of the contract termination. Instead, they deflect it with unrelated criticisms, stirred suspicion, and shifted attention away from the real issue at hand, the future of our Chamber and what its closure means to our community. Public discourse, especially from those in leadership, should bring clarity, not confusion. It should focus on outcomes, not outrage. When social media is used to mislead, distract, or inflame, undermine public trust, and it makes it hard for all of us to move forward together. The city of Lompoke is an institution that exists to serve the public good, ending nearly a century-old partnership with the Chamber with only 27 days notice, risk being perceived as abrupt and deeply disruptive. The Chamber has played a unifying role in Lompoke since 1903 and has been supported by the city since 1928. The history deserves respect. Tonight, I urge you, particularly those who may not have been directly involved shaping the decision, to lead the integrity and principle. Give the Chamber the time and opportunity to restructure and evolve over the next two years. Let's build sustainability, not sever ties without cause. Let this moment be a statement about the kind of leadership we value in Lompoke, one that is inclusive, forward-looking, and community-centered. Thank you, Mayor.
My name is Melissa Taylor. I'm a small business owner, and I've been in business for three years. And the first year, I wouldn't have made it without the Chamber. The advertising, the friendship, the talks, that's just my statement. I wouldn't have been here if it wasn't for the Chamber.
My name is Ash Keen. I'm a Lompoke resident. I didn't come here tonight with a plan to speak. I came to listen. But I felt compelled to speak because I have not been able to fully hear the concerns of my fellow citizens tonight. 60 seconds is not enough time to articulate a personal or professional opinion and provide necessary background information and an argument. Council, I implore you to reinstate the traditional three-minute time limit for public comment immediately during this meeting and every meeting going forward. I hope that you will show us that it is important to you to hear the concerns of your constituents because that is not what you're communicating with a 60-second time limit. Thank you.
I've spoken before. I'm a Lompoke resident. I'm full supporter of keeping the Chamber of Commerce. They do a lot. If we remember, about two years ago, they came in and they did a PowerPoint display up here, and the city gave them additional money afterwards. So I'm kind of confused that the funding was taken in such a short amount of time because they were here, they showed what they do, they showed the value of what they do. And all it would take is to go back into the minutes to read this. I bet you they even had a PowerPoint display someplace within our archives. So just saying I support the funding, keep them going. Then the only other thing I want to say is to the public, please, whether you like people or not, whether you agree with them or not, if you're going to be upset because one person goes a little bit longer, then you should be upset about everybody going a little bit longer. Okay? Doesn't matter if you agree with their way of thought or not.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Charles Bradshaw. And there's a business adage that's probably much older than I am. It says, you've got to spend money to make money. I recognize by many of you up here that are businessmen, and I'm sure you spend money to make money. Well, you've got to figure out that your job as council members is to make this a healthy, prosperous community. And the only way to do that is to support the Chamber. Now, there's a famous 17-mile drive north of us, and there's one right out here from Buellton to Lompoke. We should have a Chamber that can make that 17-mile drive just as famous. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Ken Austin, Lompoke resident, former CEO and president of the Lompoke Chamber of Commerce. You know, I have a special place in my heart for the Chamber of Commerce. It was a position I really enjoyed when I was there. I really hope there's a way to resolve this issue. The city council will sit down with the Chamber Board and Chamber staff to figure out a way to make things keep going because we need the Chamber of Commerce in our community. Again, you've heard a little bit of everything here tonight. There's not a whole lot I can add other than the fact I hope you can find a way to continue things by sitting down. I know there's concerns. I've heard concerns from council members at the last meeting. I've heard some concerns from the group here tonight in regards to the Chamber. But you know what? Those things can be worked out. It's a matter of sitting down, putting together a plan, holding their feet to the fire, hold them accountable. But it can be done. We need to continue to have a Chamber of Commerce in Lompoke. Thank you.
In case you guys are hard to hear, these guys are like monuments up here. Don't smile, don't do nothing. But what I want to let you know, that the Chamber of Commerce is important. When I was working in Santa Maria, I participated in a lot of activities with the Chamber of Commerce. But the Chamber of Commerce is the backbone of this community. When businesses want to get started, people want information about Lompoke, they connect the Chamber of Commerce. So what I want to know, who are you guys? When you go home and look in the mirror, who are you? Are you men of integrity? Or just one of you things in the background and to let anybody know what you're going on? That's what's happened. So you ought to make a sit-down with the DAVICA and work out a plan to keep the Chamber of Commerce active. Is that at heart? You elected officials, do the job, do the work.
I don't need a microphone. Yeah, I'm going to let you go. Do the work. God gave you two ears, one mouth, listen more, then you jump.
My name is Mate Rodriguez. I am a small business owner and registered voter here. I wasn't originally planning on talking, and it's hard to follow that other, the other comments, but I specifically chose to come to the end because I wanted to listen to what everybody had to say about the Chamber of Commerce. And you guys supposedly are listening to us, you're supposedly taking in what we're saying, but you guys cutting us down to a minute is one sign you're not paying attention. The other sign will be what you decide with the future of the Chamber of Commerce. Because if you vote with all of these people and all the people that have sent you letters saying that they want the Chamber of Commerce to be funded, then you're specifically telling registered voters who put you in your position, as other people have said, that you don't care about our opinion. So I don't need that full time, just so you know. That's my opinion.
My name is Gail Clark Savage, and I am a member of the Valley of Flowers Half-Century Club. It is a nonprofit. We use the Chamber for so many things. We are truly a nonprofit. We have no money. And we use the Chamber to help us advertise. We go to all of their functions that they have. I was so sad about the Old Town Market, which we had already paid for, and we've planned and we've put things aside for, and it's not even going to happen. I think that's a crime. This is a good-sized city, and I can't imagine a city not having a Chamber of Commerce in a place this size. It's absolutely a crime.
Hi, my name is Mathias Taylor. I'm here on behalf of the youth. We didn't really have any youth out here speaking today, but I just kind of like to share my perspective. I had probably the hardest quarter of my life this past 10 weeks academically-wise. But I come back and I hear the Chamber shutting down, and that's what I've looked forward to coming back for the summer these past couple of years. That's what we all look forward to. We've talked about it. There's no other reason for us to come back here besides our families in the Chamber and the events they do. We have more fun at our schools, you know? We're out doing things. We're out in other states. We're out across country. We're out overseas doing things, and we can't come back here because there's nothing for us here. And that's what we've been fighting for, for these past couple of years, for all our lives, really. We've been fighting for a chance to build our families here. And if I can't say that I want to build my family here, if my brothers and my sister can't say that, then what are we doing here? Thank you.
My name is Keith Terry, and I'm new to this community. I've been here since 2021. And prior to coming here, I did quite a bit of research on the nonprofits and the different organizations. When I came to a certain person's name, DAVICA, I researched what she had done in this city. Not just that, her character and her lack of fear to do what's right. First time I met her, I told her she was like my idol, my, you know, she was a star. And so she went into the Chamber of Commerce, I assumed, to fix it. And if I can further assume, there was a city council meeting about how do you build more business to come into the city? It was during a budget meeting, I think it was, and you were talking about, how do we get more business in the city? I don't think closing the Chamber of Commerce is going to do what it is you said you wanted to do. I'm glad you're here, Mayor, and I hope you do different than the last one. Nothing against her, just different. Otherwise, why did you get elected?
Seeing nobody rise to come forward, close. Oh, guys, go ahead and line up. Get up here.
Hello, Monty Montgomery, longtime citizen. Just because I'm old, shush. The fact that we haven't had conversations with the Chamber, I think that's probably the most concerning thing. Please, please, please make sure that whatever decisions are made, aren't made without that conversation. Please. And that's really the only thing that's going to make this any better.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for listening to our concerns. My name is Rosie Chavez, and I'm currently president of the Lompoke High School Alumni. I've lived in Lompoke for 75, 76 years, founded school here, and I know so many people in this community I'm very honored to know and work with. I have, in the past, been responsible in organizing our car cruise, which our community thoroughly enjoys during the summer months. And with this project, we raised anywhere from $3,500 for scholarships for our high school students and college students in our community. DAVICA has been wonderful. The Chamber has assisted us in planning, organizing, and making this event possible for our community. And I'm hoping that we will continue to have the services by the Chamber in the coming years. Please reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to share my personal experience with the Chamber. I too started my business in the beginning of the pandemic, and I have gained many friendships professionally and personally because of the Chamber. Also, they have helped my business thrive. I see many faces in this town that support. We are here to support. I see many faces in this town that support, we are here to support the Chamber and hope you guys rethink your decision. Thank you.
Hello, Council, Scott Reardon, local business owner, 50-year Lompoc resident. And I wasn't going to speak, but I guess everyone else did, so I will take it. I've been a member of the Chamber since I started a business over 10 years ago and they've been invaluable to me, helping my business get started and spreading the word. And I know pretty much all of you on a first-name basis, I've been in all of your businesses and done work for you. And I can't pretend to know all the details of your 1,000-page budget. What I can tell you is that what the Chamber gives the city is something that is, you can't put a number on it, it's invaluable. The, the value they add to every business and everyone here who's involved with them, you can't measure that. So I really implore you to find those dollars in your budget and help the Chamber continue. Thank you.
My name is Veronica Clark. I'm a business owner, a resident, a voter. Mr. Mosby, Mr. Starbuck, you both know me. We're here, we're advocating for the Chamber, but the Chamber's a building. I'm here to advocate for Dvika stalling. So I started my business in 2011. I work with underprivileged, at-risk, low-income subsidized children, children who might not eat, when they go home, children who don't have a foundation. Because of my heart and Dvika's heart, she's helped me from my for-profit, I don't have a nonprofit, which I did have a nonprofit, which I closed in 2018, which has never stopped me. Dvika has been the one behind me to help me organize things for this community that specifically touches some of the individuals that you guys might not see. In 2020, Mr. Mosby, you helped me use your property and Dvika, it was her backbone to help me organize an event in this community that served over 800 families. They were able to come in, have fun and do things with their families that you never know these kids could have. I'm out of time, but I want to say that you guys, by closing the Chamber, you're stopping business owners like me, who manage that children in our communities who are going to one day grow up. Please, just look at it, you're saying, I know it's 120,000 we're talking about in the budget, Dvika helped me raise $47,000 to feed our community. To feed our community off of a truck from another El Parisio food truck at 7-Eleven where we have families lined up to get meals that we prepaid from bonds so that our community can make sure our community can eat. Because I couldn't go home with my family eating right while I knew that there was kids that were leaving my daycare and other daycares in this community who couldn't eat. So it goes past 120,000, it goes past the budget. I have so much respect for you, Mr. Starbuck, I have so much respect for you, Mr. Mosby, because I know where your hearts are at. So I just ask that before you take this out of the budget, which will in turn not only, not only take two employees' jobs, those are citizens of our communities, Dvika and Myra are citizens of our community who will no longer have a job, but it will also affect our citizens, our children, our businesses, our for-profits, our nonprofits, and, and just people like me. And I appreciate you guys giving me my 100, my minute and 45 seconds.
Hi, my name is Joe Matthews, Screechy Cat Media. You've heard a lot from people that have grown up and lived here in Lompoc for all their lives. We are brand-new to Lompoc, we actually moved here last year. Moving to Lompoc was an easy decision for us. My fiance and our, our children moved up from San Diego. Moving here was an easy decision, starting a business here was not. As we came through town, there are more empty storefronts than, than full ones. We are running our business out of our house right now because even though the real estate is available, it's not priced right for folks that are here in Lompoc. So what I wanted to say is that, you know, the Chamber is incredibly important to us. We are members not only of this Chamber, but Chambers in San Tinoz and Orchid as well because we value what the Chamber of Commerce can do for us, especially being new to the community and being able to meet new people. So please, please save the Chamber of Commerce, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alex Murkison, I'm a proud resident and community leader here in Lompoc. Let's talk about the Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce. A nearly 116-year-old institution, a city partner since 1928. For nearly a century, they supported small businesses, bridged military and civilian life, developed local leaders and brought life to Old Town. But legacy is now in jeopardy because this council decided it wasn't worth the investment. You didn't just slash funding, you severed a relationship from $108,000 down to $35,000. You sent a clear message that the Chamber's work no longer matters to you. Not the ribbon cuttings, not the youth programs, not the advocacy, not the community awards, not even Old Town Market. And here's the kicker, after pushing them to drop Old Town Market, you guys suddenly found money to do it yourselves. That's not a collaboration, that's a takeover. We've seen how this ends. The city takes over events, adds fees, layers on red tape and attendance tanks. The Saturday markets, they're basically gone. Food Truck Fridays rebranded into Family Fun Fridays and no one shows up. Even the police department's food truck event barely cracked 100 attendees this year. Meanwhile, the events that do work, Flower Festival, Farmer Markets, Juneteenth, they come from nonprofits and not the people, not the city hall. If the Chamber completely shuts down completely, we don't just lose events, we lose leadership Lompoc, we lose the Military Affairs Committee, we lose the voice of small businesses in the city. Let's be real, the Chamber didn't fail anything. You guys failed the Chamber in return, you're going to fail the community. You don't build a community by cutting off the people who built it. You don't gain trust by boarding power. And you don't get to gut a 116-year-old institution and pretend you saved something when you really didn't. If you think you can replace trust, relationships and legacy with the city staff and a budget line item, you guys aren't just out of touch, you guys are dangerous to progress in the city. Thank you.
Anybody else? Going once, going twice. Seeing nobody rise, we will close the oral communications and we move on to the next item on the agenda. Appointments, council appointment to youth commission. Got it? Councilmember Starbuck?
I'll go ahead and move that we accept Oscar Rivera on the youth commission, whichever term.
You have a second on that? Push your motion button.
I second.
Now Bridge of the motion? He, he made the motion, which term? Which term are you asking for? Oh, you want to go to this guy? He got the wrong button. You have the term? Which term are you appointing?
I, I pushed the law, but it's an adult.
All right, erase it, let him go back. Clear that, let him make, let Councilmember Starbuck make the motion. You ready? Push your motion.
I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we accept Oscar Rivera as a one-year adult member.
You got that? Councilmember Starbuck?
I second.
Ball in the second. Let's go ahead and vote. That passes 5-0. Item number 10, it's a public hearing to consider the ordering of services and improvements and continuation assessment. You guys want to shut the back doors? Just want to... Thank you, Chief. All right, item number 10, it's a public hearing to consider the ordering of services and improvements and continuation assessment of fiscal year 2526 for the park maintenance and pool, assessment district number 2002-01, adoption of resolutions potentially, 6761 proceeds 25, approving the engineer's report and confirming the diagram and assessment, and ordering the continuation of assessment for fiscal year 2526. Matt Adams, accounting and revenue manager. Get your podium so you get your microphone there.
Good evening. Tonight I bring to you the park and pool, city maintenance, or park maintenance and city pool district public agenda. Today we are, here we'll start with the, sorry, there's a lot of... Back in February, going through the timeline, back in February, we, you directed SEI to produce the engineer's report and that came back, we presented it on May 20th. Prelimarily, it was approved with a few questions and adoptions or adjustments that have been made since. And now we are at June 17th, the public hearing with those, the new public, the new engineer's report. So per the engineer's report, we based it off of the January CPI, which was 3.33%. We cannot exceed a 3% increase year-over-year, so any remainder gets put into a pool for use in years when the CPI is lower than 3. So this year's adjusted CPI is 3, which leaves a 7.13% uncaptured excess that will be applied in future years if the CPI is ever lower than that. Then it means the 2526 single-family equivalent is $33.52 over, from last year's $32.54. The assessment revenue estimate for this year will be $393,494, which is the math, the math behind that is taking the $11,739.08 single-family equivalent and multiplying it by the rate of 33.52. Here you can see the budget on the right-hand side. It has been adjusted and some of the CIPs that were requested previously have been taken out with the new budget presented on there. The new total is $6,886,813. The city minimum requirement of 25% is 1,000, I'm sorry, $1,721,703. Currently, the city, according to the budget, is contributing $4,771,616, which is 69% of the assessment district, so it's well over the 25%. So in summary, we're here to bring the, bring it to the council and the citizens to approve the engineer's report, to confirm the diagram and then present the assessment for 2526, sending it to the county for, to add to the tax rolls for the next fiscal year.
Any questions? Councilmember Bridge?
I think you've improved the report significantly from the first time we've seen it. And I think through discussions, we've clarified what it is we're doing. So I would, I would make a motion to approve this.
Public comment first.
Oh, I apologize.
Hold on, hold on.
I thought we had it up.
All right, public comment on this item. Item number 10, public hearing. Anybody? Too exciting, huh? All right, we'll close the public comment, bring back to the council deliberations, motions.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We don't know what the motion is yet, but it has been made and seconded. All right.
We're going to pass it.
As staff recommendations?
Staff committee.
Okay. Who's the second? Go ahead and vote. And that passes 5-0. Move on to item number 11 and item number 11, it's been suggested to me because I have potential conflict owning land close to this, that Mayor Protim, you're going to take over as soon as I leave the room. Correct?
That's correct, Mayor, so you're going to recuse yourself from this item and leave the room.
I'm going to do it from here, right?
Whatever you want. Well, no, you got to go over there to push back.
Do I? Okay, item number 11 is the State Route 246, capital preventive maintenance and Robinson Bridge project initial study with proposed mitigated negative declaration and section 4F de minimis determination comment letter. And we have a presentation. All right, thank you.
Good evening, council members and residents of Lompoc. We have prepared a letter with comments after reviewing the initial study. Because I'm not sure what kind of questions you guys have, I do have some photos and stuff that I can put up if you want, but I'd almost like to hear what kind of comments you have so I can specifically address the issues. There were four options available. We feel the city should support the option that provides the best for the least amount of scour potential, that addresses the flood issues and also ones that provide the best complete straight components. And that would be option four, which has an 11-foot multi-purpose path on the north side of the road and a six-foot sidewalk on the, or on the south side. So with that, I'd like to hear what kind of comments and questions you have and then I can hopefully address and answer those.
Are there any questions from the council? Go ahead, Councilmember Starbuck.
Is it going to get there by the 20th? Because I think you got everything we asked for.
We're, we're going to, if you guys tell us to go, we're going to get it signed and we are going to go ahead and send it in as soon as we can do it.
I just wanted to say, it's, we brought it up last meeting, it's done. It meets the goal of what I think everybody here wanted. It's what the community wanted. So as long as you have, you might even have to hand-deliver it just to make sure, huh?
No, trust me, we will, we will guarantee that it's, it's been received. One question I do have for the city attorney, we currently have Mayor Mosby signing the letter, but because there's a conflict, do we need to?
Thanks, I was going to bring that up. We are going to, the staff recommendation says the mayor or the city manager, so that's fine. We will, we will need to have the city manager sign the letter. And we need to take public comment first.
Okay, are there any more questions from the council? Councilmember Ball?
Just real quick, if you don't mind repeating yourself just a tiny bit, in layman's terms, can you tell us what option you're suggesting and why?
It's option four.
What does that do?
Option four provides a multi, 11-foot multi-use path on what is classified as the westbound side, which is on the north side of the bridge, and a six-foot sidewalk on the eastbound or south side of the bridge. So it gives paths on both sides of the bridge. It also reduces the number of piers that are within the river. There are two piers, four columns, as opposed to right now, there's over seven piers on the bridge. So we're reducing the amount of piers in the riverbed. Because of the way they're spaced, they're not down the middle of the river, which, where the velocities are the greatest. It also does some to remove the bridge from the 100-year flood mark. And in so doing, it doesn't completely remove all of the road segments out of the 100-year flood mark, but we're going to have them take a look and see what we can do to do that. So.
That was great, I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe you also asked for shoulders to be maintained out to the roundabout?
Yes, yes. And that's for the section of road that's being repaid. We asked for a minimum of a six-foot shoulder.
Okay, if there aren't any more questions, oh, one more question. Councilmember Starbuck?
The city attorney, if Mayor Mosby has to recuse here, will he have to recuse at the SB CAG meetings?
I'm not the attorney for SB CAG, but I, I would think so that if he needs to recuse here, he needs to recuse. recuse here, he needs to recuse there.
Well, I, I think in this motion, I might want to include somebody in staff to maybe speak for us down there, because I'm the alternate, and I don't know jack about what's going on down there.
Yeah, so, so you could include that in the motion, for you to attend or for a staff person to attend for the city.
That staff person would be you?
More than likely.
You'll like me, I travel well.
Okay, I'd like to open up for public comment on this item, number 11.
Hello, Carl Jones, um, we're actually putting in the request what we saw when we went to the meeting, that we wanted to see. One of the problems I saw with that, there's no lighting on the bridge at all, but we have walkway on at least one side of the bridge, possibly two sides, so, you know, wintertime is dark around here at 4:30, and the biggest concern would be like all the homeless that are gonna be walking on that one side of the bridge, and the sidewalk is going over to the bridge house. But my other concern is the other side, they're not putting a sidewalk, and I, we voiced our concerns there at the meeting, wanting to know why we're not putting a sidewalk on the side that leads to River Park. So as citizens, I feel, I felt like they could have offered the chance of having a sidewalk on the other side of the road too, that leads over to, to River Park, so people could walk over to River Park from Lompoc without having to go down, you know, if they wanna stand on a sidewalk, they'd have to be on the bridge side house and eventually cross very busy traffic. And then like, like, once again, like I said, they're, they are not planning any kind of lighting on the bridge in any way, shape, or form, and it gets very dark out there, and you're gonna have foot traffic as well as vehicle, vehicle traffic, so that's one thing I think the city might wanna look at, is, you know, why can't we have the sidewalks on both sides, not only going to the bridge house, but also to our, our public park, and plus, what about some lighting? So that we, it, it seems like it'd be a lot more safer, but thank you.
Can we have one more person?
Counsel, I agree with all the decisions and what was said by this gentleman about the choices, I think option four is the best, I don't see a pier in the middle of the river channel being at the best interest with all of the debris that may come down the riverbed. The other thing too, I did send my comments to Caltrans, District 5, I also suggested during the engineering of the bridge that they eliminate any horizontal spots on the abutments or anything like that, which could induce homelessness and encampment that would lay there. I do agree with lighting on the bridge, I suggested, you know, the both walk paths have some kind of maybe solar lights for night. The six-foot easement on both sides of the road between Sweeney and the roundabout, I agree, I know some bike riders that just don't go past the roundabout, there's just no safe way to go. The other thing too was the sidewalk, I agree, on the north side of the road, that would connect 12th Street, I think that's what it is, Highway 1 to the footbridge, and then River Terrace installed a bike path along the riverside of their build, their development. I think it would be really nice if we could continue that in coordination, continue that all the way now to the multi-purpose path, which will now give bike riders and pedestrians a way to walk to River Park, which I see there's some improvements going on there, so anyways, that's my comment.
Thank you, thank you very much. With that, I'm gonna close public comment, bring it back to the council. I have a question here for Robin, does the recommendation also include lighting on the bridge, any of that?
Not in its present state, but that would be a minor change to.
That could be something that we could put in as far as with our recommendation? I think that would be probably something that would be probably pretty smart and safety-wise.
No, by all means, I will caveat that with, we are dealing with Caltrans, and anytime we go above what their standards require, you're gonna be looking at them wanting us to maintain.
Gotcha, gotcha. Councilmember Starbuck?
Option four also did include the north side of the bridge going to River Park.
Yes.
So I mean, it's in the recommendation.
But it, instead of, instead of a sidewalk, they're calling it an 11-foot multi-use path.
Right, which intends to tie in with the bike trails and everything else, so.
Councilmember Bridge?
No, I was just trying to clarify, there is a sidewalk regardless of what we call it, on both sides.
On, on option four, yes.
Thank you. Okay, if there aren't any more comments, anybody prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, taking staff recommendation, I think that's it. Oh, with the addition of the, some, something about lights.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to accept staff recommendation with a second and to include lighting, let's go ahead and vote. Looks like it is accepted, uh, forward with one abstent, okay, so we got that. Now, Councilmember Mosby can return, correct?
Great job by the Mayor Protim, by the way.
Oh, Mayor Mosby, right? Okay, item number 12, sir. All right, item number 12, establishment of an ad hoc committee to meet with the county regarding homelessness. Anybody wanna give a simple request of whether we have you before I go to public comment? Do we need anything?
I have a comment.
Hold on, hold on.
We had an ad hoc already established for a meeting with the county about the riverbed, I believe it was Jeremy Ball and Mayor Osborne, so I'm not sure if you guys wanna use this ad hoc to do the same thing, or change it, I'll leave it to you guys for direction.
I think it's an important conversation, the county reached out to us, it's our opportunity to push back and give them our positions, updated positions.
We have an ad hoc, but we have it down here for public comments, so let me go to public comment before we move on to deliberations, okay? Good, all right, public comment, any public comment on this item, number 12? Seeing none, very good, we'll bring it back to the council for deliberations on this item. You wanna carry on with your deliberations on that one?
I'd be happy to continue, and I'd love to talk with anyone up here that wants to step up and kinda help me understand where we are as a city on this issue of homelessness and the big picture of the bridge house.
So we just carry on with what we got carrying on with, correct?
Sure.
Okay. We good?
I still have a comment.
Okay, Councilmember Vega.
If it's okay, I don't think creation of another ad hoc committee is prudent at this time, since we already have one that has not been deactivated, so carrying on with the current one, however you guys structure it, I just think that would be the better way to go.
Very good. Do we need a motion and move on, move, move on motion?
Well, I think as the city manager said, the, the makeup of it was Councilmember Ball and Mayor Osborne, so are we just, what does the council wanna do with Mayor Osborne's?
I think the current list actually just says the mayor and Councilmember Ball, does it not on our, the clerk can help you on that, our, does anybody have the?
I'll, I'll make that motion, that we carry on to the current mayor, and just move forward and structure it still under the, under the original heading, which was homelessness and riverbed cleanup, and, and don't change the structure. That would be my motion.
All right, you have a, go ahead and push the motion button.
Does it require a motion if it's already existing?
I don't know, do we? Yes, no?
I don't know if it's officially listed as Mayor Osborne or just the mayor.
Yeah, I thought it said the mayor, but that's okay. Let's go, let's go through, we'll get it over with, okay? All right, we got a first, we have a second on that one. Yes.
Your motion, sir.
Did you push your button?
Oh, my motion was good?
Yeah. There we got a first. First by Vega and a second by Starbuck, go ahead and vote. All right, good, that passes 5-0. So, new business, item number 13, it's review of Lompoc Police Department's 2024 Annual Military Equipment Report, Community Engagement Session, Annual Renewal of Ordinance Adopting the Lompoc Police Department's Military Equipment Use Policy and Inventory Pursued to AB 481. And we have Brian Dillard, our Lieutenant for the Police Department, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmen, members of public, and my cohort, cohorts from the city, I get the honor of speaking tonight about the annual military equipment report, a little background on it, on September 30th, 2021, California Governor Gavin Newsom signed Assembly Bill 481, which became effective January 1st of 2022. It requires the Lompoc Police Department to create a military equipment use policy, which must be presented to city council and adopted within 180 days. Due to the past events in our nation, the public has asked the state and local leaders to enact a law that enforces reforms and sets statewide standards for safety escalation techniques. The, since that time, we have submitted an annual report on our military equipment, and each year we update as we go. The recommendation is that the council review the 2024 report, which in my understanding you have copies of, and approve as well, the changes to it, it only impact like quantities for certain items specific to more like the munitions portion, when we get like gas or less lethal munition rounds, and that's, that can be through use, through training, through expiration on the, the gas, those are really the only changes in the current report from last year, so, and I'm open to questions, and I'd really like to have a one-minute limit again.
Oh, no, no, no.
Nope.
Any, any questions?
I'll pay for that later with the chief.
Okay, no questions, we'll open up for public comments on this item. Nobody rising on item number 13. All right, we will close the item, 13, bring it back to the council for deliberations or a motion. Councilmember Ball?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, first by Ball and second by? Second by Bridge.
Hey, yours doesn't count, does it? Does it count?
Let's go ahead and vote. You're less than a minute on that one, right? See?
You're trying to attempt to, you've gotta ask, right? You don't know what to ask.
Yeah, for sure, that passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
I'm gonna pay for it.
Thank you. And that brings us on to new business, continued, item number 14, that's, woo, possible adoption of resolution number 676, per these 25, adopting a biannual budget for fiscal year 2527 and a capital improvement program for fiscal years 2531, introduction ordinance 172825, admitting the chapter in municipal codes, updated language related to the bunch of appropriations, transfer authority levels. So that also have the, the allocation document in that?
It is part of the resolution.
Well, I'm just in, I guess it's down deeper?
It was, it was included in the original packet, and so that hasn't changed since last, the last meeting, and it is available on our website.
Yeah, I was just looking at the recommendation, are we, are we good with that even though the, it's not identified directly? Is it in the resolution?
Which document are you talking about?
The, the cost allocation plan.
Yeah, it's identified in the resolution.
Okay.
So, that is sufficient.
Section 3, it says the cost allocation.
That was a-
Yeah, that's sufficient.
That was one 350-page document, it was a rough one to eat, yeah, I know. Very good. Thank you, our Christie Donnelly, our management service director. Let's see where we are.
Okay. Well, we've had a few meetings about the budget, and we're gonna see if we can take this over the finish line tonight. We have distributed the proposed, which would be the final draft of the budget, to each of the council members, it's in the, in the lobby as well, printed, printed versions, and then it's available online, both the PDF is available online and a digital version that's a little bit more interactive, and you can drill down into even more detail. I'm gonna, see if I can use this. Okay, so tonight, we're gonna start with kind of the highlights of the, of the budget, we're gonna walk you through the document so that you can see the highlights, most of you have already been in it and in the weeds, we've had conversations during this last two weeks, but available to, so that the public can also walk through it. I'm gonna review the changes that we've made since the draft that we gave you two weeks ago, we're gonna look at the CIP, that's the Capital Improvement Program, and go over the resolution as well as the ordinance introduction, and there is a little bit of a change in the language of the ordinance, there was, there was some confusion, understandably, because we had different documents had a little bit different language, and so we wanted to make that consistent, and it's both in being introduced in ordinance as well as in the resolution.
I have one question, Mayor, for the-
Yes, Councilmember Vega.
Just for the public knowledge, okay, our goal here for adoption of the budget was which date now that we're looking at? We're obviously here to try and adopt a budget, but what was our end date?
So, we have a requirement to adopt a budget by June 30. Okay. So that, that is the deadline. The hope would be that we could do it tonight, if, if there are, is consensus, and if there are some adjustments to it that we can make, we, we could make some changes and just make note of those and still pass, pass the resolution tonight. If we aren't able to do that, we can come back in a special meeting potentially next Tuesday, or if, up to June 30, any day.
So this is the home stretch, just for the public's knowledge.
Yes.
After all these meetings, this is down to the wire here, what we're going to do.
We, we've got, we've got a good budget, working budget right now, and so we, we are open to feedback and discussion and changes from the council and input from the public. We've had the workshops throughout the last couple of months for feedback, and we would, we would like to see it go forward. I'm gonna go ahead and-
Okay, thank you.
We are gonna open it up for oral comment and, public comment, oral comments. At the end, we'll just make sure that we're all on the same page and, and so forth, okay? So for the tour, we're gonna look, I'm gonna reference this book, if you wanna follow along with me, I'm gonna just show you a couple of the main sections, and this is so that the public can understand, this is this 404-page document, like I said, it is available online, both in the PDF form and also in an interactive form. The fiscal policy, the first change that we had or addition was the fiscal policy summary section. section and this is pretty straightforward. It is a summary of all of the fiscal policies that we have had in place in various locations and we are now documenting them in this budget. That is on page thirty to thirty-three. We, we put it in, in a, kind of in a table format so that we can quickly look at whether or not we're in compliance with the different items. And we are in compliance with these budget items with an exception of our minimum fund balance goal or policy is sixteen point seven percent. And as of 2024, at the end of 2024, it was approximately fourteen point two percent of operating expenditures. So that is something that we need to try to, try to adjust over the next five years to bring that back up to sixteen point seven percent. The second, the, under the reserve policies on page thirty-two, I just want to make a correction. We are going to, we, we ran the, the numbers this afternoon on the working capital balances and we actually are in compliance on all of our major proprietary funds where we have a twenty-five percent of operating expenditures of working capital. We also have on here on pages fifty-eight to sixty-two are all of our position changes and a summary of those. And at the back of the book on three eighty-two to three ninety-two is the listing of all of the positions in the city. Pages sixty-four to sixty-six, this is a, a new table we haven't included in the past. This is something that, it combines all of the funds in the city, whether it's general fund or enterprise funds. And this table, while required by GFOA for their award, makes me nervous just because I don't like combining general fund and governmental funds with enterprise funds, but it is something that gives us a snapshot of the city as a whole. Where I really wanna focus is on the general fund. It is in balance. I'm excited to be able to say that. Now, on page sixty-seven and sixty-eight, you will see, divided over the two pages on this draft, is the comprehensive fund summary for the general fund. I also printed out and gave to each of you and put it in, in the lobby as well, a summary page so that we can see it all on one page and we don't have to go back and forth from page to page, if I can find it. This one here. So it's the same, it's basically just a reprint of page sixty-seven and sixty-eight. And what I'd like to point out, I'd like to look at this and I, I don't have a, I could put it up on the screen, but it would be so small, nobody'd be able to read it anyway. And I just, I just wanna walk you through this comprehensive fund summary on the general fund that you can read. At the, the top half are our revenues, the bottom half are expenditures. And then we have twenty-two actuals, twenty-three actuals, twenty-four actuals. And those are, are linked to our actfers and those are what we actually spent and those, those numbers have been audited. They are in different categories a little bit than what is reported in the actfer. So the actfer is the, is the audited financials. This is a snapshot of what those are. The numbers are the same. Fiscal year twenty-five expected is a projection of where we're going to land in a week, in a half. What we are looking at for the budget is the fiscal year twenty-six proposed and the fiscal year twenty-seven proposed. And if you come down to the, towards the bottom of the table, you're gonna see total revenues, less expenditures for fiscal year twenty-six in the general fund is a positive seventy thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars. Now, that's really close to expenditures and revenues equalling. But I have to say that I am, I'm, I'm grateful that we're able to be in this position. We have been able to tighten down our, our budget and really look at fiscal responsibility. There are a lot of cities in our area, in California in general, that are running deficit budgets right now. So to be, yes, sir.
Just real quick question. Now, that seventy thousand, that didn't include the police negotiations?
No.
So that's, without that one, so there's another number yet to be added to that one.
That is true. Right now, we are looking at what we have already, what, what is set. And it, in the fiscal year twenty-seven, you can see that, that the total ends at four hundred eighty-nine, eight eighty-seven. One of the things that we, that we did since the last draft was that we were able to add in the beginning and ending fund balances. So if you'll notice on this table, it actually is showing the fund balances. We didn't have that on the draft before. So that was on page sixty, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, where the handout. I went over the layout of the section and, and I guess what I wanted to point out on this is that if you can, if you look at the general fund, this is the table that exists for all of the funds. We have the same snapshot for each fund and you can go through and look at each one and after the general fund, we have all of our special revenue funds and then we get to the, the enterprise funds, which are our utilities. And that starts on page one forty-seven. And on page one forty-seven, it's a snapshot of the revenues by each utility and then the next page over is the expenditure by each utility. And then every utility page has their, or every utility has their own section. After we go through the enterprises, there are department summaries in, in the second half of the book, starting on page two oh six. Sorry, my math brain just went, I just went, oh, look, we had four hundred and four pages and department summaries start on two oh six. It's almost exactly half. It's been a long couple of weeks, months. So, department summaries, you're, you're gonna have a lot of, we, we tried to eliminate as much overlap as we could so that we're not having all the expenditures in one and all the expenditures in the other. So if a department and a fund are the same, like water and electric, then it's only reported in the fund section. But there are a lot of departments within the city that have multiple funds within them. So we're trying to give you a snapshot in the front half of where the, where the fund lies and in the back half of where the department is. So, a department might be, well, my department, it, it could be management services. We could have, a lot of these are divisions, so treasury, utility billing, purchasing in stores, finance, human resources. I'm just looking through these. They all have goals and objectives and performance measures. And then at the very back, we already, we went through this at the, the personnel. And that's, that's a tour.
I have a quick question and maybe it's to Jeff. We started this process with fifteen hundred approximate pages and there were multiple spreadsheets that are loaded on the website, which I believe still exists.
Yeah.
That, I guess takes us to a lower level of detail, would be a simple way to say that. If and when we approve this proposed budget, does that imply we're approving that fifteen hundred pages of detail or we're just doing the summary?
It would be the full budget, all of the detailed lines, because what happens is that?
All the fifteen hundred.
The, how, it, it's closer to?
Fourteen hundred and thirty-seven.
Ten thousand, ten thousand actual accounting lines. So it's approving each account number and the amount that's budgeted on that line item and then we load that into our system so that it limits the expenditures throughout the year to that amount per account.
So, I'm a little fuzzy on this. I saw numbers in there of four hundred bucks. That will be handled by the limits we place on the changes that have to come back to the council? I don't expect you're coming back if instead of four hundred and thirty-nine dollars, it's four hundred and seventy-five dollars. I'm trying to understand what exactly we're approving and I, I'm sorry, I'm a little fuzzy on that.
So, what we might be approving, let's, we can look at, at, say, finance. In the finance department, you have personnel lines, which may, are probably the highest number of, of dollar value, just because that's where we, the, we spend a lot of our, our resources as in salaries and benefits. We also might have a line that is office supplies and that might be four hundred dollars. What will happen is that the, let's just say ten thousand dollars for personnel, we know it's not that, and then the four hundred, each one would be, will be loaded into our accounting system and that is what keeps us in, in spending the limits that we have each, whenever we have, have to go buy a pen or write a check for salary. Those budget limitations are what keep my department or the finance department will watch all of those expenditure lines and we don't write checks or set, make payments that aren't in the budget.
All right, thank you.
So, just real quick, some of the changes that we made since the draft that you had two weeks ago, we did adjust for the chamber. You had asked and said that we needed to not have the cost allocation plan cover the chamber contract and I think that was part of the decision to lower the, the contract was because we were taking more of that on as the general fund. So we did that, we removed the chamber and then decreased that to offset. It does still increase the general fund overall because there was so much that was coming in from the utilities. We did decrease professional services that, in, in the general fund for one of the line items because it's now covered by a grant. And so that was a change. And then some of the other adjustments that were made, we, we found out, we got a, a new quote for our medical screening within our insurance and so that was increased. I think it was about fifteen thousand dollars for the year in our insurance fund. We did change, we, in the water fund, we added a position that was for regulatory compliance that we have to add and in, in order to be able to offset that, we removed one position that is currently vacant. We merged the remaining lines. There are about three lines in broadband that didn't get moved into communications originally and so we are moving the broadband fund into communications. And then we added the fund balances like I just mentioned. And then we did a lot of formatting. I, I am really proud of this document. What's that?
All right.
I, I am, I'm really proud of this document. I, my team has worked so hard in putting together and, and proofing and then even, even people outside of my team, we took copies of this and gave it to multiple people throughout the city and said, "Proof it." And we just want fresh eyes on it and, and it was, it was just a, a really great team effort. In the capital improvement program, oh, see, I, I didn't even write anything on that because this capital improvement program book, five hundred and sixty-nine pages. The, the front half is each individual, well, the very, very front of it are the summaries. That's where I would spend most of my time. And then if you have interest in a particular project and wanting to know more detail, they are listed alphabetically. And then at the very back are the, all of the items that were deferred because there was not funding. That's the approved ones and, and it's approved by staff, still pending your approval. The whole list is here, so this is our, your cheat sheet. And, and the numbers at the bottom in green on the last page, per column, are the totals that were brought over into the budget book. So the, for example, twenty-three million, two hundred thirty-two, nine hundred ninety. Those amounts are distributed throughout the, the budget book as capital costs. So the resolution before you today and the ordinance, we for number two, it is introduced for first reading by title only with further reading waived, ordinance number one seven two eight parentheses twenty-five, amending the Longport Municipal Code related to budget appropriations, transfers, authority levels in its attachment two. And I'm not sure if we need to read all of this into record or if you have had a chance to read through the ordinance and the changes on there, but it basically is clarifying the various levels for city manager and council and at what point we can approve appropriations or when we need, it needs to come to council, not appropriations, transfers. And it also adds on a sentence or a, a section at the, on the back, the number or letter D. When actual expenditures in a fund exceed or are expected to exceed approved appropriations by more than a thou, of one hundred thousand dollars, such expenditures will be brought to city council for consideration of additional appropriations or other preventative action. For any funds that are comprised of more than one department, such as the general fund, this rule applies when actual expenditures in a department within that fund exceed or are expected to exceed approved appropriations by more than a hundred thousand dollars. So we added in that clause based upon feedback from council and have also integrated that into the resolution. I think that that is all that I have. This is now time for you to ask me questions. We can discuss.
I have a question off the bat. Is the museum money in this budget?
Yes, it is. I, I would have to go in and, and find it, but it absolutely is in the budget.
That says, did you find it, Councilor Trump? I missed that one. In there somewhere.
In my osmosis, I know it is there.
Well.
Okay, I got you.
It's in there.
All right. Councilmember Ball?
Let's see, I'll try to be real quick before we get to some public comment. I just want to bring your attention to an opening statement, city manager's budget message. It says, "The council's budget goals affirmed at the March 2025 Budget Goal Setting Workshop continue to guide our work." There's five items listed. I just wanna read them real quickly. Effective public safety, economic vitality, enhanced quality of life, long-term fiscal health, enhanced infrastructure and capital improvements. Does that seem reasonable?
That's correct.
So, I think, in general, I'm pretty proud of this budget. I think it's done a, a pretty good job to sustain our public safety efforts that have happened over the last few years. I'm pretty proud of that. Fiscal health, with you at the helm at finance and Dean, you know, always looking out for numbers, I'm, I'm pretty, pretty happy with our long-term fiscal health. You mentioned that a lot of cities around are running deficits and we're not. That's good news for us. You know, CIP, we're definitely addressing infrastructure and capital improvements. How much funding for the chamber is in this budget?
So we have, and I just in, in the budget for the chamber, we have thirty-five thousand for the contract plus twenty-five thousand that we had, had set aside for in-kind monies and then, and so sixty thousand.
And what was that number last year for that same?
A hundred and eight.
A hundred and eight, okay. So, I guess my first point here is, is I just find, again, I find it interesting that we have council bullet points here, economic vitality and at the same time, we're considering a budget. a budget that essentially closes the Chamber of Commerce. So, I definitely have issue with that. That's my first issue. Second one was Measure I. Measure I got passed in 2020, the mayor supported it. The chamber was activated to be a huge partner in pushing and educating the community on how important that revenue was to our bottom line, roughly speaking. You and I know it's been roughly six, seven million dollars, eight million dollars on a good year for Measure I, not 1% since its inception. Give me a rough idea of how much revenue we have gotten just from Measure I.
So, rough, I haven't gone back, but I mean, 35, 40 million?
35 or 40 million dollars in additional revenue to the city, thanks to Measure I. One of the biggest supporters, pushers, cheerleaders for Measure I, and that additional revenue that we needed desperately, because we were bleeding in public safety, all of the things that we wanted to do good by this community, we were flailing. So, the chamber took it upon itself, the city pushed really hard, and collectively, together, took us over the hump. And here, over the last four or five years, an additional $40 million has come into the city. Today, we're thinking about passing a budget that says, "Thanks, but no thanks," to one of the most important entities in the conversation of what Longboat needs to be a better city and to be more vibrant. I will not at all vote for this budget unless we fix it. Thank you.
I have a question for you. In analyzing what was going on, I don't know how many pages Councilmember Ball read in this budget book, but I know this is our fifth book, I believe, that we've gotten through, and I've gotten through every page in the budget book to try to find the monies in there, to try to find resources, so that we can actually get through a number of negotiations that are still out there. Okay, I know one of the complexities we've had is that we did just receive this budget book 4:30 yesterday, and we got the capital improvement plan just about an hour ago, well, before the meeting, which I did try to go through as much as I could to find in there. And there are, there are some items in there that I have some questions about, one, I was going to hold back until the deliberation aspect, but I do have a question for you in my research and trying to find out where the chamber was, was in our contract that we had with them, and that was in referencing, in their contract, we had a request for financial statements or audits, and in my asking, just tried to find out where they were, did, the last document I could get was 2022's. Do you have any other documents from them?
I do not.
Okay. So, when I saw in 2022, there was $120,000 in reserve in the chamber. So, I guess my question to the city attorney is, at what time in a contract like that, and generally speaking, if we have a requirement, would it become a level of default with the city, and when would it be a time when we would no longer be allowed to give somebody money when we had a requirement to see an audit report?
Well, under the chamber contract, the audit report or the accounting review is due by March 31st every year. It's an annual requirement. If the chamber misses the deadline to submit that report to the city, then we could declare a default of the contract immediately, but a lot of times, parties to agreements don't declare the default and terminate the contract. But we could have done that the day after they missed the deadline, and then terminated the contract with the chamber.
So, we, two years out, we have not received the required documents to overview, review, and oversee the people's money. Would it be, your suggestion, and generally speaking, if we had a contract that somebody being in charge of our monies, would it be advisable that we would give another group money that we have not seen an audited financial statement from?
I would want to see audited financial statements, that they're in the, it's in the contract. I, I do think that this is, I don't know that we have reached out well enough to say, "Give us, give us your audited financial statements," yet, and so I think that we need to do that. But we haven't received the audited financial statements on time, and I have hesitations when that happens, because I don't know what's going on with the money.
I know the contract, I believe it says, again, by the attorney, March 31st, to supply it.
Correct.
So, I think, I think we do have a critical point there as well. I know Matt over there, I believe, reached out, trying to get that, when I asked where the audited statements were, so we could see where things were. Have you seen anything? So, that's a no. Okay. Very good. Councilmember Ball?
So, that's great. I think that's important for us. We should probably get an audit report, if that's what we've requested, but it sounds like we haven't requested that specifically. Now, let's, I just want to just point out, and again, I won't defend the chamber, I think they can speak for themselves, but three, four, or five, six years ago, the chamber operated with three to four employees. They are now down to about one and a half. So, $108,000 going to them equals about the lowest-paid CEO of a chamber in the area. And again, I think we've heard a tremendous list of all the ancillary things that the chamber does without asking for additional money. So, again, this is still coming back to a decision of, do we want to have a chamber, or do we not want to have a chamber? So, if we're looking for a loophole to blame them for not having an audit or misusing funds, then why don't we do what we've done in the past and ask the chamber to actually have a conversation, a transparent conversation, by having them actually come up and have a discussion with council, and answer some of these questions. It's, it's fine for us to reject doubts, throw out some questions, I think that's fair, but they are not allowed to answer, so perhaps we can do what we've done in the past and do the right thing.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Mr. Adams, could you come up to the podium real quick? I bet you can't even guess what I'm going to ask you.
Contract compliance.
I knew you knew. What was the, off the top of my head, I forget the minutes from our last contract complacency meeting, which I sit on for the council. There was three people to put in for exemptions, chamber, museum, and there was a literary council or something that we waived them off. So, we were still two people that we waived the audit. Go ahead and explain. Well, I'll let you speak, I don't want to do your job.
I didn't, I'm just waiting. So, yeah, we did have the literacy council, which we, which was waived by the committee, because they don't meet the requirements for it at the time, and then the council, or the chamber, and the museum had submitted audit, or not audited, financial reviews as of the 2022 fiscal year. We presented those, those were accepted by the committee, and, you know, presented and approved. We have not received anything from either of them due to last, no, it was February of this year, we had brought Chapter 45 back, and that was basically determined with staff proposal that we, it only applies to housing at this point, for nonprofits to provide housing for low, low-income and nonprofit, or homeless. So, that absolved the Chapter 45 requirement, but the chamber still has their contract requirement.
And so, the council is not doing contract compliance anymore, then?
The committee, you mean?
Yes.
Correct.
So, that's banished. So, now the contract complacency, we just did a meeting last year, though.
Well, it's only contract compliance per what was in Chapter 45. It wasn't full contract compliance.
Got it.
I have a quick question on that. Again, 1,500 pages and numerous documents, but it seems like I saw somewhere where we offset $3,500 for an audit. Could you clarify that for me?
That was part of the, the contract, was that we included, the total amount that we paid to the chamber was 100, well, for the contract and the audit was 111,500, so 108 plus the 3,500 for an audit, and so...
So, we paid for the audit?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and that would be something...
I don't know, that's here, there, I'm just trying to keep this all straight in my head.
And, and that would be something, I think, that for a contract negotiation to look at, you know, should we be fronting that, or should we be doing it on a reimbursement basis, or something along those lines, just for the 3,500? But that would still, it would be something that we'd have to budget for.
Very good. Any other? Councilmember Bridge?
I don't, you know, I heard you guys last time, I was the guy who made the original proposals, just from a budget standpoint, and that's all it was. I've been pretty transparent about that, and I believe I made that pitch two or three times in the last few months, so, you know, there's no, no hidden agenda there. And I think, from, I can only speak from a political standpoint, both you and Councilman Starbuck made a pretty passionate speech or pitch, and we went from, we doubled what I had originally suggested, so I don't think that it's, we don't want a chamber, and so I just want to be clear about that. It's, we're trying to figure a way to balance the budget, and I have something I'm going to wait for deliberations to put up, but we clearly know that we are in a very, very tight year, and I saw a lot of people here today, a lot of them suggested they were business people, and I've seen a lot of negative comments, I've tried not to engage, did a couple times just to clarify what I thought was what actually happened. And I, and I respect your challenging us to help, but I would also challenge all the people that were in this room, perhaps we ups, you know, our membership fees by, you know, 20% or 30%, and see if we can fill that gap as a community. And if the chamber wants to go out fundraising, I'm happy to be there right next to them. So, it's not a want, just like I think murals are extremely good for our city, but two weeks before this, we took the money and said we can't afford it for the murals, and that completely wiped them out, I'm stupid. I don't think they get the kind of revenues that the chamber gets. So, you know, my only comment is, and maybe I'm reading more into your tone, that it, you know, somehow we want to kill the chamber. That's certainly not my intent. My intent is, let's find a way as a community to get where we want to get to in this.
Councilmember Ball?
So, I certainly respect that, and I don't have anything personal about this, and I respect your desire to be a fiduciary agent, and I certainly respect that. I think that the way I would maybe put a counterpoint to this is, and I said this earlier, we got bailed out by the feds. The reason we have $8 million in reserve is because of the American Rescue Plan. We were able to use accounting techniques and make sure that we could cover for public safety. That was a wonderful thing. It kept us a lot safer than we would have been if we didn't have it. Because of that, we were able to put $8 million into reserve, and I know this is contentious to some. I've got half of the people at City Hall that are very excited that we have that money in there for a rainy day, for a horrible situation, I get it, I understand that. But that money was originally intended to invest in the community, and it's $8 million sitting in the bank until something bad happens. So, in my mind, I think, well, if we create a narrative in Longboat that all the headlines and all the papers in all the different cities are, "Longboat closes its chamber," and you and I can, we can know the nuance, we can know that we're doing the fiduciary thing, but the word on the street up and down the central coast is, "Oh, Longboat no longer cosponsors the state of Vandenberg. Longboat no longer does military affairs barbecue, where they feed several hundred people on base and create goodwill between the community." So, I guess for me, I, here we are talking about literally pennies compared to the revenue that we have coming into the city, and it's this council that decided to, without getting a lot of public input on it, by the way, decided to say, "Even if you're okay with it, we don't want to use any funds coming from public utilities to help with this thing, because we've heard that rates are too high." And so, I start to think about that, and then I, I also know that the people that live, like my parents up in Mesa Oaks, people I talked to in Mission Hills, Vandenberg Village, they all look at us, and they're like, "Oh, my gosh, your water bill is lower than mine, your electric bill is lower than mine." And so, this council decided to say, "Look, I'm sorry, we've decided that we should not use any utility funds to help fund the chamber, because, whatever the reasons." And so, I guess it's just a counterpoint. It would have been different, and you would have had my attention if we would have said, "Look, chamber, we don't have money over time, you guys need to figure it out, let's help you cheerlead, let's, let's help you raise some funds, let's get your business," whatever, but we didn't provide that. We didn't do, we didn't say, "Hey, let's figure out a year or two or three-year plan for an off-ramp, and let's get the chamber stable so they can figure it out." For those that are yelling about an audit, I get that. What is it about the audit that you're looking for? Okay, that's fine, let's present that, let's get the audit, let's hear from them why they haven't provided it, I think that's reasonable. But again, we're talking about $108,000, and the chamber has gone from a staff of four to a staff of 1.5 in the last few years, and still, still today, we heard with that limited staff, how powerful they are in this community and how important they are. So, I guess for me, I, here's an idea. Let's figure out a way to have a new conversation with the chamber, if this council doesn't want to support them, then give them an off-ramp and an opportunity to make a two- or three-year plan to be sustainable, but then not be supported by the city, because we want to be more fiduciary. I think that's totally fine, but that option, any of those options were not presented by this council. It was just one and done. So, again, I'm, I'm hoping, I'm pushing, and I know there's so many other things in this budget that deserve a lot of really good attention, you put a lot of really great effort towards these things, but not one person of the, how many people that stood up in this line complained about their utility rates? Not one person. What they did ask for is for us to see the bigger picture and do the right thing, so I don't care where the money comes from, how we do it.
Too high utility rates.
One.
Councilmember Ball, I mean, Councilmember Starbuck?
Well, it's a little premature. I know some of you want to go digging in here and hoe the rose with this budget, but we need to pass it tonight, you know, we know what's going on. I got to mention that it's very important to me personally to pass a balanced budget, not to go in debt. Our neighbor's $25 million debt, and they're signing it. We're worried about a few hundred thousand. We should, you would do it at your house, you don't go in debt. What I always proposed, and before I will vote for the budget, is that we do a review. You're predicting, okay? It's, it's a guess, what are our revenues? We know cannabis is down, everybody thinks it's paying millions of dollars, we're a little over a million on cannabis revenue, so, you know, is it going to go up a little, or is it going to continue to go down, or transient occupancy tax? We don't know, we're basically forecasting and guessing. When I vote to do this budget tonight, if we can get it that far, one of my things that I want to include in this is a review, and I would recommend a January review. That gives you six months to close out this budget. We're into the new one, we'll have a good idea. At that point, now we can reevaluate, do we have the money too? Is your predictions correct? There's probably going to be money, we budget very conservatively, but to go ahead and commit and go a million, two million in the hole because we have a reserve? I don't go into my savings account because I need an extra loaf of bread. I mean, it's just the way that we should do it, and so, I, I think, serious, when this budget does pass, we make an amendment, you know, future council agenda, budget review, January 6th, and in the staff report, I would like to put, review funding for chamber, mural, and anybody else that was kind of trimmed in there a little bit. It's reasonable, it gives us time to do a dialogue with the chamber, it gives us time to settle with the mural. We will know going forward... We will know going forward if your predictions are correct, no unknown expenses. I mean, it's the right way, the right thing to do.
Any other questions?
So I just wanted to mention that on page 32 of the fiscal policies, at the top, it does say that a mid-year budget review, assessing the status of both operating and capital activities and recommending appropriate mid-year adjustments, will be submitted to the city council and made available to the public by February each year.
We used to do it every six months. It worked. It was good. That's when we knew our TOT was declining. We anticipated a huge amount of TOT because we opened a public safety center up there. Flop, nothing. Readjust the budget. So I've always done it six months. I've been very confident of it. That gives enough time for forecasts, but not the micromanagement. You know, things happen slow in money world here, so.
So with doing a mid-year budget review, we would have that come in, I say February just because of the holidays and the timing of getting staff reports in, more likely it is February by the time we can do that. But then we would also have a mid-year, we...
I get, okay, February would be a fine time, but I guess in the big scheme of things, would the Mural Society be able to hang on that long? Will the Chamber be able to sustain itself until February? These are, you know, so, so these are the kind of the questions that I'm thinking, and I mean, obviously, the city manager, the mayor, they can work with this later on, but anyhow.
All right, any other questions for Chrisy, before I open up the public comment? Okay, we'll open this up for public comment. How many people wish for public comment on this? Hey, go ahead, give your three minutes on item number 14.
Hi, I'm Bill Hewen. We've talked about it several times today, that the Chamber has been funded in the past through the cap, the cost allocation plan, and this year, the mayor and one of the councilmen indicated that they did not think that we should, because of Proposition 218, that the council should be funding the Chamber with those funds. I'm just curious as to what the attorney's legal position is on that matter? Can the city use those funds to fund the Chamber?
Hello, my name's Leanne Oliver. I'm a concerned citizen. I am the complete opposite of what he just said. I think Proposition 218, we should keep public utilities for public utilities. It's fiscally responsible. We shouldn't be giving money out to a nonprofit that can fundraise. They can raise their rates to the businesses if they want to. There's lots of different things that they can do. I own a nonprofit, so, you know, I literally do fundraising. And second of all, that $17,000 in the general fund, I think should go to negotiations, that extra money. We need our police. We need our fire department. I also feel that we do need to be fiscally responsible because it's we the people's money, not ours, we the people. So, thank you.
Deacon Steve Popkin, former CEO of Lompoc Valley Medical Center. As you kind of heard the groans from the people here in the audience, having a six-month or a mid-year review would be moot as far as the Chamber goes. The Chamber will be, in essence, out of business at the end of this month if there isn't a decision contrary to what you're talking about here. You say that you want the Chamber, you want it to survive, but your actions speak otherwise. The, you know, you've heard all the excellent work that the Chamber does from all the people who spoke before and eloquently from Councilmember Ball, but just to give you a little more macro perspective, I did a little research, and there are 189 cities in California with populations between 30,000 and 100,000. Of those 189, how many do you think have a Chamber of Commerce? Answer is 189, 100%. And if there was not a Chamber of Commerce here, it would be, in my opinion, I think in most people's opinion, a major embarrassment for this city. Now, I'm sure all of you are city council members because you want to move Lompoc forward, but your action, potential actions here speak otherwise. You all are here because you want the reputation of Lompoc to enhance, not go backwards, but your potential actions here speak otherwise. I just think the decision, for again, all the reasons previously said, and again by Councilmember Ball, decision to, you know, cut the funding is the same decision as getting rid of the Chamber, and I think is extremely short-sighted, extremely misguided, and I urge you to do whatever you can to reverse that. I don't know what the mechanism is. And if you want to have a mid-year review, fine, fund the Chamber at its current level for six months, and then have your mid-year review and see if you can afford to continue doing it. Thank you.
Aaron Crocker, Lompoc. Up here again, talking to y'all. You guys already know where I stand on this situation. You've heard from a lot of people tonight, but you haven't heard from everybody, and I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but there's been, I think I've counted, at least 10 to 15 phone calls that have tried to come through, and right now, that phone is sitting off the hook over there because nobody's answering it. Okay? Most recently in March, at a city council meeting, the minutes said that you could call in to leave public comment. And right now, everybody watching on the channel that you guys sponsor has a little blip up on the screen that says, "Call this number during public comment if you want your comment to be heard." You guys aren't hearing from all of your constituents here that have been trying to get ahold of you, and it's just another example of the, I feel, poor communication to everybody at large that's involved in this thing. I think that there needs to be a conversation with the Chamber. I think, Dirk, I appreciate what you're trying to say. We all know the Chamber is not going to survive that long. I don't see why the motion can't be that we fund the Chamber as stated and then we review it. That could be a motion. I think that could be approved by everybody here. I think that makes everybody happy. I think you need to think about your legacy as a city council. You guys have already seen all the headlines. I've seen it on multiple news websites, and everybody's just saying, "This city council is getting rid of the Chamber," regardless of the context and the nuance and everything else. That's what it looks like. And that's what it looks like because that's what it is. You want to talk about 2022? We haven't had a financial review since then? You guys haven't been able to see that? That hasn't been brought up until now, right? You're just bringing something up today to try to convince everybody of your side of this thing. That's just a new piece of information. Okay, well, let's get it and have a deliberation and figure it out. But currently, you guys aren't interested in that. You guys limited everybody to one minute, and then immediately, the additional agenda items all got three minutes. I appreciate the three minutes now, but we should have had it then. And it's just another example of you guys, okay, plugging your ears, making decisions how you see fit, but listen to your community, look at how the news is portraying you, and think about your decision. There are ways to do this tonight, and talk about less funding for the Chamber later. I'm not against that. I am against doing it in this rash way. Thank you.
My name is Jasmine. I still hate public speaking, but I do want to say, if your egos are hurt in all of this, you're not doing your job for the people. We need this Chamber. If you sign this now, we don't have it. So come up with a way to work together. Some of you are landlords. This is affecting your businesses in your buildings. Fix the fight or whatever's going on. Make this work. We're not going to be the one city that doesn't have a Chamber. What a laugh, like, what a joke. No, fix it. Anna.
Hello, I'm Anna. I just want to say, I think you've heard tonight what your constituents want, and whatever decision you ultimately make is your decision to make, but it's wrong to make it tonight after you've just heard from so many people. And then to just go and pass that budget and not even have conversations about it, not have conversations with the Chamber, I think it's wrong, and it tells them that you do not care if you make that decision tonight.
Hello, Marissa Martinez again, and actually, the points that were brought up, I already knew were going to be brought up because I had a conversation with the council members. So again, I'm just going back to communication and transparency. I don't understand why we're not talking together, and I do have a proposed amount for the Chamber, and so that everyone's held accountable, and I think that should be more or less the way that this is looked upon so that we don't have, since 2022, I don't have a financial statement. Well, that also falls back on the city as to why you don't have a financial statement. So, thank you. Please reconsider.
Hi, my name is Joanne, and I'm 18 years old, so I may not have like the full knowledge that you all have here, but what I do have is ears. I can hear that there's just not that much communication going on here, and it's really pathetic. It's really embarrassing to say that I'm from Lompoc. Like, back in the fall, I moved away from Lompoc after living here almost my whole life. For the first time ever, I moved to San Diego, and I just have such a shame for where I'm from. It's so embarrassing to say that I'm from here. And then I come back, I was like in the middle of my finals week, and I just hear that they're like shutting down the Chamber of Commerce, and it's like, why am I even coming back? There's no reason, there's nothing here for me to do. There's nothing like here for me to learn from, there's nothing for me to grow from. If you're like not even listening to our community, if you're not listening to the citizens, there's not that many, like, youth here that are my age, but I'm sure if they were, they would like be on the same side of me because there's nothing to do here. Like, imagine if you were 18 or like any age younger, and you were living in Lompoc, and there's nothing for you to do. Like, it's so, I'm sitting here like for the next three months until I can go back to school, and I'm counting down the days because I'm miserable here. There's nothing for me to do, there's no opportunities, and it's just a shame, just coming back from such a city that was like flourishing and then coming back to Lompoc, and it's really sad. So I hope you do better, and I hope you listen to the community.
Pastor Brian Halterman, founder and director of My Commission Town. I figured I'd wait till three minutes because as a pastor, one minute can easily become three minutes fast. But you know, I'm not exactly sure what happened or how we got where we are, but I have to say, something just doesn't feel, look, or seem right. Somewhere along the way, I feel like we've forgotten how to truly listen, how we're called to build together, and instead of creating more hurdles, we forgot how to work together to find ways to say yes. Yes to collaboration, yes to compassion, and yes to community. We need to stop looking at each other as obstacles and start seeing each other as allies. You and the Chamber are allies. It's time to work together, not to win arguments, but to find answers. There's answers you guys can find, not to protect positions or stances, but to empower the people of your community. And maybe most of all, we need to build a table. You know, a table where voices are shared and they're not silenced, where people are heard and they're not dismissed. A table where we can invite each other in, pull up a seat, and commit to the hard work of building the community together. And I feel like if you pass the budget tonight with no consideration, you don't want to build that table. You don't want to call us together, you don't want to hear, you just want to say, "This is what it is." You know, council member, I heard you say you want to pass this budget, and I understand because I want a balanced budget in my house. Haven't figured out how to do that yet. I've got three kids and a wife, but I understand that. But if you pass this budget tonight, you're saying, "I don't want to meet together with this. I don't want to find that solution." It won't last six months. They'll be gone, and then what will we do? So I encourage you, build the table. You've got a week. I know, it sounds crazy. I think you've got two weeks almost. Hold off. Have that special council meeting. That's why we elected you, is to make those hard decisions and have those special meetings. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate all you guys, too.
Just to let you know, you're one time.
I wasn't sure if it was allowed. Can I or no?
Oh, the first Thursdays? Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's what I was going to talk about. Hi, my name's Carrie. I hate speaking. I'm actually like a longtime lurker, so when everything about the Chamber getting shut down popped off on Facebook, I spent hours reading all of that. I know a majority of, about everybody who spoke negatively in the situation as far as against the Chamber. Thank you, Leanne, for showing up to speak against that. I think she might be the only one who spoke negatively on Facebook, saying, "Yes, this is a good move. We should defund the Chamber. Thank you, everybody." Everybody else? Where are they? They're not here. They're not supporting Lompoc, and those are the same people that will say, "Yes, these are good moves," and then they will stay home, they will not support with businesses, anything in Lompoc. I have my child maxed out with the two things to do in Lompoc, gymnastics and aquatics. That's it. What else am I supposed to do? I will let you guys know, I've left town and I've spent my money elsewhere every single night this week for the lack of, I can't spend my money here. So if we're saying with our vote to end the Chamber, end that business connection, funding things for families to do, all of those extra things, the city's not doing it, what are we supposed to do? And should we give in and say, "Yes," to all the people who stayed at home who said that this was the right move to cut the funding? And I'm sorry, yes, first Thursdays, there is something to do. The Art Walk, Lompoc. You know, where's the funding for that? I'm not saying you guys should just give money away, but to equivalate like $100,000 for the Chamber to being a million dollars in debt, I don't know how you run your house, but that's crazy. If you're like, "Yeah, this extra $10 in the budget, I'm going to be 100K in the hole next Tuesday." I just, I just don't understand. So sorry, I'm rambling, but I just want to say that the people that showed up, that's kind of, I think, where we should put our trust and faith in on what is going to keep Lompoc going and what will support Lompoc ongoing. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
Tim Boliver, resident of Long and Poc for 43-plus years. Moved up here from Long Beach. When I moved up here, there was a lot of things to do. There's still a lot of things to do. Get on a bicycle. We have bike paths. We have all sorts of other stuff. Unfortunately, kids, I now have down to grandchildren, great-grandchildren, excuse me. We used to go out and just make toys out of anything and everything, but now, all the kids do this. Yeah, it's unfortunate. Our mayor has tried to open up how many different events out of his dad's property, and they keep on getting shut down. So unfortunately, I believe, from what I understand, that this board is not closing down the Chamber of Commerce. It's just reducing funding to that Chamber of Commerce that's been poorly run. You've already said that the audits haven't come in. You've paid for the audit. Where'd the money go? I hear of all sorts of other things going on. I don't know. I don't have all the data. I need to pray for you guys to do the right thing. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Matthias Taylor, back up here again. Good to talk to you guys again. Uh, Mr. Wolliver, I don't know if you remember, but we actually had a conversation when we were out registering voters. Um, and I do respect where you're coming from, I really do. But I think there's also, we got to understand that there's a generational gap here. Um, there is only so many youth out here supporting, you know, what we're trying to do here. Um, but yeah, like you said, there is, there are things to do here. Um, you can go out on a bike, you can make something, go outside. But I also think, yeah, it is important to mind the generational gap and mind the fact that we are living in a new digital age. Um, we are living in a world that is dominated by technology. Um, we are living in a world where you can make more money, you know, going out and learning how to manufacture computers, or learning how to do computer science. We are living in that world. And so I think, while I do respect the points that have been made in favor of letting go of the chamber, I do think that it is important, it is important to have a chamber. It's important to find ways that we can continue developing opportunities here in Lompoc. And maybe, maybe the chamber is not the best way to do that. And I understand that that, there are points being made against that. But at the same time, we got, we have to understand that the opportunities here are not the opportunities that are going to carry this community into the future. And we need to keep fostering the opportunities that organizations like the chamber bring forward. Um, you know, I would appreciate if our nonprofits could support each other. Um, and I just, I look at myself, and again, I talked about my brothers and my sister earlier, but we don't have all the time in the world to be able to build our families and build what we want to see in Lompoc. And that's why it has to start now. Um, I really appreciate what you guys are saying, because I was a little bit in the dark myself. You know, I came here, I didn't have all the information. I didn't know how much money the chamber got each year. Um, I didn't know how much money it was going to give into the general fund if we did agree with the chamber. But knowing that, I know that there is, there has to be some way that we can finagle the money, maybe give the chamber less money, maybe find a way to, I don't know, give it to them in a way that when they hit a certain benchmark, then they get more money, or when they're doing, when we know that they're, um, having an impact in the community, then they get that more money. But, um, I just, I don't see a need to completely eliminate the chamber. Um, and while I do respect the points that are being made, I do believe that we can work together to facilitate some type of way forward that doesn't involve cutting out what many people feel, what a whole community feels is a integral part of the, our community, what a whole, you know, state feels is, is an integral part of the community. So, yeah, I just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing no one rise, we will close public comments and bring it back to the council deliberations.
I want to have a discussion.
I, I've got a ton of things about a fifteen-hundred-page budget book that I'm concerned about, okay? Fire away.
Can you put my, uh, presentation at risk of having typos in it? I'm more concerned with content, but, uh, I'd like to, and I have trouble keeping track of what I want to say, um, so I use a cheat sheet. Um, so I've spent the last, I've spent at least a hundred hours on this. Nothing like what the staff has spent, though. They're, they've done an amazing job, and, um, so I want to be clear that anything I say here is not criticism. And I'm kind of a little bit with Dirk. I think it's important that we don't let perfect be the enemy of good enough, and we move forward and get things done. I have some concerns. Um, this budget is a bottoms-up budget, and what that's led us to do is to go dive into details, um, and expend a huge amount of energy, perhaps questioning things at least I perhaps shouldn't have done. We have a large amount of money sitting in restricted funds that I don't fully understand. Uh, the capital improvements, I think they got, uh, ungrouped here in the last package I got an hour ago, but they were grouped, and it was very hard for me to go back to previously approved, um, items. In the budget, I feel sorry for the public personally, because you can't find the unassigned. You can't find the seven point four that we're talking about. It's, it's buried in a twelve or thirteen million, um, with a grouping. And I, and I understand why. Again, there's no criticism here. Um, we have a budget right now that's got seventy K, um, for unknowns. That's less than a tenth of a percentage point. Um, I know you've heard me repeatedly say I come from the commercial side, but that budget would never fly in any business I was ever in. Um, so that concerns me. Um, we know there's raises coming back, so we know immediately we're going to really be several hundred thousand dollars in the hole. Um, that concerns me. Um, the water enterprise system seems to be in trouble to me. When I look at it, it's got big negative. And yes, we can come with a recovery plan, but it's disappointing to me that we would get our utilities in that condition. Um, and what may push the budget back a week is when I get to the goals part, because we've all been so focused on those line item, bottom item things. We lost sight, or I lost sight, that there is a fairly significant portion of this document where we're establishing what our next several years of vision are. And they're buried in the goals and the objectives of the departments. So I, I have spent a little time on that, and today I'm going to present some of that. And it may not be fair to the staff, because I have not had time to share that with them. Um, finally, there's no criticism here. So as I go through this, if I come across as criticizing staff, that is not my intent. Next chart. So here, here's what I think we're hanging our hat on. And that is that there's padding in there. And that may sound charged, but when you see round numbers where guys have taken, you know, ten thousand, three thirty-four was last year's, and make it twelve five, or five four, and make it eight, and one eight, and make it four, that, I've done it myself in the bad budgeting. So, it doesn't take much when we're, we're, we have seventy K going to several hundred, and, you know, just that little five items or so, there's probably ten grand of what I could say padding, but I am sure, if I went and asked staff on every one of those, they'd have a rationale. But I, I just think that's human nature. So that gives me a level of confidence that Christie and Dean and the staff may be able to manage this budget. But, um, you know, you do this a hundred times, and you got a hundred thousand dollars there. So, so it's important. Um, the professional services, I've spent a lot of time on, I still can't understand it, because they're all odd little titles. And you're, you know, and you recognize it's an artifact of the old system. I look forward when the new system, we can put real titles on there so we can tell what they are. But, um, again, I'm just highlighting with the challenges and concerns that I think we're facing. Next slide. We have huge numbers locked up in restricted accounts, and I'm sure it's all legitimate. But when I went out and researched, other cities are finding creative ways to unlock some of those monies. Um, and I think what happens is, over time, the restrictions, restrictions become generalized, rather than looking at ways to what did the words actually say? And we went through it on the engineering assessment, that we went back and forth on. And, you know, I know that when people went back and looked at the baseline documents, they, I'm assuming they had to go, ooh, I didn't think it said that. Um, so, and over time, restrictions change. A gentleman got up and asked what the, the lawyers feel about two eighteen. And I've been long discussions with lawyers about two eighteen, and the, it hasn't become more and more restrictive due to court cases, um, where you can let, do less and less than that. You have to show a very clear nexus to what you're spending the money on versus where it came from. And I'm in the middle of going through that with the carb fund, the carbon fund, because I think that's a prime example. We can lack, unlock some of that carbon credits. And I know you're a fan of giving it back to the people, and I'm not necessarily against that, but if we could extend our, um, landfill by ten or twenty years by unlocking a little bit of that money, that might be money well spent. And you might, and again, I'm not trying to take away from here. So I think we should have a, a list of the restricted funds, and well, you know, how much is, is in them, and at least give me the source, the baseline source of where the restrictions come from, so we can go research them and make our own validation. So, uh, next slide. Uh, this might be a little dated, because, uh, you just handed us, um, a brand-new spreadsheet, so I apologize. But there seem to be items in there that were not discussed before. Three pool cars, the library HVAC system seems to have been, been pulled forward from what I can remember. I don't remember talking about street sweeper's truck, but I'm getting old. It could be senior moment. Uh, you've ungrouped them, so that's great. Um, I think the enterprise CIP might need a little more review, because I think there's things missing in there that could really bite us. Um, the floculation system, the one fifteen KV, and it's in the enterprise, so maybe we can pull some of those forward if, I, I'd hate to have our system go down because we saved a hundred K, so. Um, I've already mentioned it's really, next slide, it's really hard to see the unassigned reserves, but we all know, because we've been talking about it, it's about seven point four million. Um, if we don't do anything, and, and that's based on two months of, that's all that says is, and I would hope that every person in this audience has more than two months of living expenses if they get laid off, because that's what that's all about. And if we do nothing and just let inflation go, we're going to go down to one and a half months. So, something, God forbid, happens, we as a city will survive for one and a half months. So, it's an important chunk of money. I hate that it's locked up, but it's important. And just like I keep a, you know, a go-bag in, you know, my finance reserves, so. And we're heading in the wrong direction. We should be putting three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars a year just to keep up with inflation on the expenses. And I don't see any reserves being added this year. And it's questionable in my mind whether we'll be able to do it next year, based on the unknown. So, if you could flip the next slide, please. So, we have some difficult decisions, and I think where we're heading is to do item number one. And we're going to trust the staff to manage the budget and come in with a little bit of extra. That's basically what I've been hearing. I don't know how they'll do it this year. Maybe next year they have a chance. This year looks very questionable to me. Um, we could just say, hey, we recognize what Jeremy's kind of pitching this is, let's just go take some money out of the reserves. Let's take five hundred K. Let's own where we're at. Move it into the funds, and then maybe the murals can get funded, or maybe, so that, I think that's, I don't, not to put words in his mouth, but I, I think that's a bit of what he's saying. We could go back to the staff and say, just go reduce expenses by one or two percent, and that'd give us five hundred K. Staff's not going to like that, but, um, that's more a top-down kind of approach. You could, uh, you could take a vacancy credit. So what we've done in the budget, which I give Christie a lot of credit for this, she went out and looked at vacancies, she came up with some magic algorithms, and came up with credits against each of the departments. And, um, she said, well, traditionally, we're going to have vacancies. Let's, let's appropriately budget for it. I went and backed all of those credits out, um, and added them up, and divided them by a hundred thousand dollar salary with a loaded fifty K. That comes about, we're pretty close to twenty-seven people. I also talked to Gabe and went out and looked at the, the history that I could see, and we rarely go below thirty. So we could increase the vacancy credit by three people, and that'd get you about five hundred K. Um, you guys may have other ideas, but if we're doing item one, and I'll, you know, I'll probably vote for that if all the council, the, the old hats here say that's the way to go. But I want to at least have said, this is the condition, and this is what we could do. Um, if I was king for a day, I probably would vote for the vacancy credit. Put, you know, four hundred and fifty-five hundred K on our budget, and it, it's kind of a modified what Jeremy's suggesting, but it's a way to at least know consciously what you're doing. Um, next slide. I, I've already talked to that. So, next slide. Okay, so we're going to go into the section where it's a little bit of an eye chart. Um, the back portion of this budget sets vision. It sets what our goals are, and, um, it's done by department level, which is cool. I, I have suggested that we should have some additional goals or objectives. Um, I, I have talked about reformatting our, uh, public outreach, our website, putting more emphasis on business. Um, so this, the red lines you'll see here, and perhaps after the meeting, you guys can get a copy if you want, um, sets those objectives, um, by highlighting what accomplishments we've made as they relate to the city and to the council. Um, you know, the, the effort you guys did on getting the, uh, impact fees, that should have been all over our website. It should have been broadcast in every news media we could find. Um, it's that kind of change and focus I'd like to see. Um, and I followed through and created objectives, uh, against those for the community relations. The building department, you guys have also heard me harp on that. Um, I think we should have a permit concierge. It can be inside the building department, as long as they recognize that's a duty to go out and reach out and get it. And, uh, let's, let's really talk to the customers outside of them coming and standing in front of us, because the developers standing in front of us are always going to tell us what we want to hear. So, um, and I think we should have a permit roadmap that gets put in the website, and that's on this page for building. And again, I do the same thing. I follow through with objectives, or measurable. Parks and Recs, this one's a personal one to me. I kind of maybe campaigned on it a little bit. But I'd like to see a site, spite, site-specific plan for turf-proofing River Bend Park. And depending on what I hear back from legal, it's possible I could pencil that whip into a carbon credit. Um, and I think we should take River Park and create an events center out in the back half of that, and actively go find those events, get back the Renaissance Fair, get back whatever it is, but make that a goal for Recs and Parks. Um, so that's in there. Planning, well, that's just another place where we should be focusing on business development. And, um, we could, uh, partner with the Economic Development, Community Relations, and, and again, get that flavor into our website. I'm going quick. Um, in HR, this one might be a little bit controversial, but I'd like to have an objective that we increase or focus on local hires, um, establish some kind of baseline, and then improve on it. Um, I I think people living in town, being employed by the city's a good thing. And I came from corporate, I don't know that cities do this, but what would happen to us is our classifications would cause salary growth that was reasonable for the person that was in the position. We used to call it corporate creep. They've been there 10 years, we've changed their titles a little bit, we've done ways to get them raised. HR should, when a vacancy comes back, see if there's a way to back, get that back where it belongs. You know, I have, I have a retail clerk that's been with me 20 years, and she's making, I would never pay a retail clerk that if I was hiring her new. She's well worth it to me. But I think we should consciously do that and not just let it roll. You know, that position was getting $120,000 a year, we're going to hire a guy at $120,000. Let's look if that position could really be filled with an $80,000 a year person. I know there's lots of people in the city who would love that. Financial services, I'd like to get a little more than one day to approve documents, so I have 30 days in here. Christie looked at me and said maybe 15, but I think we should have more than, you know, a day. And things like cash flow statements shouldn't be six months behind. And here's a personal one, I'd love to have our BIANO budget formatted to ensure the final product is under 1,000, and it looks like you've already achieved that, and as long as you took the CIP out. But I would really like the narratives and the spreadsheets to come in a rendable format, where we can use the tools that exist. IT, IT should have as an objective finding ways to reduce our overhead. And I'll say the same thing about AI that I said about DOS, when I used to have employees come to me and go, I hate Windows. This wave's coming, we can either ride it, or we can get wet. And we should be looking at ways to integrate AI now. Don't let it get away from us. So, an easy one to start with is transit area, and I think IT should collaborate with all the departments and find ways to reduce their overhead. Purchasing, I'd like us to get more local vendors, I'd like those to be objectives. And I'd like to review the contracts and see what it is that keeps our local vendors out. And we just had a large landscaping one, I believe, where we said, well, the local guy couldn't qualify, he couldn't do all the contract terms. Well, something's wrong, because that guy's been in business forever, in our town. So, let's get the money to stay local. And again, purchasing is a prime candidate for AI. And I'm hurrying, guys, but this is important, I think. Billing, I don't know if we do email utility billing, but do we? Do we do email utility billing?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Well, I would hope we'd be trying to increase that wherever we could, because that saves mailing. And I think we should have an objective to reduce our credit card service charges by 10% every year. That might be what's called a wild-ass goal, but, okay, the fire department, they had really good stuff. I think as a council, we need to be aware that their vision is to get their own ambulance service. And I don't think it's fair, I think we're doing too electric this a little bit with the AMR or MI system. They went down a path that's, you know, they probably talked about it for two years, and now it's coming to us, and I'm having doubts about it, one year, for a while. And I'm imagining the fire department's expending at least a lot of brain energy, thinking about that, and it's in, I believe it might be in the goals and objectives to put a plan together. It's probably going to have a large cost impact, a recoverable cost, but we'll still have to come up with the money at some point. So, it's in here, it's in the budget somewhere, buried in, you know, a line, and we're kind of buying into it. So, I think it's important we think about that. The police, I had two challenges with the police. One is they're transitioning to an ILP policy approach. Sounds really cool, but I don't know what it costs, and they're on that path, so we should have a feel for whether that's what we agree with. And then, they had a goal, they have a goal, we have a goal, to reduce traffic infractions, I'll say it. I would prefer, as an alternative, to reduce unlawful riverbed occupancy and reduce the incidence of theft. I created those here. Again, this is probably not fair to staff, because this will be the first time they've seen it. And, you know, I would be willing to delay a week on the budget to get that, those things addressed. That was long-winded, and it probably overwhelmed everybody, but I think it's important, it's as important as arguing for, you know, a long period of time on murals. So, that's my two bits.
Councilor Vol.
So, I'll be, first of all, I appreciate that, everything that you said. And I think when it comes to a lot of the details of added efficiencies, things that the staff may not like, I'm all ears, honestly. Like, it's okay for us to do our job and be responsible. But what I also did hear that I thought was helpful was an openness to creatively find a solution for some of these little issues. You had the number up there of 7.4. If we funded the chamber full, fully, for three years, we're down to 7.1. So again, it's not, you know, not going to drain us at all. It's just, but I do like the idea of this council figuring out strategically. Again, it's a big-picture thing. If we do want to find the money, you've shown us that we can. There are different methods of doing that. Vacant spots, I don't, honestly, I don't care how we get there. What I care is that we listen to the community, and we adjust ourselves to try to do something right by them. Couple little points, and again, not a huge disagreement, but you mentioned, and again, I hear this all the time, that, hey, you know, if this was a business, it could never function like that. Well, I mean, but as you and I know, government is not a business, because we can't make a profit. That skews everything that we do, when we know we can't, right? So again, there is a little bit of a difference for me between what the government's role should be, can be, how it invests in the future of the community, doesn't always have a line item of profit. But I hope that there's an openness in this council, that the profit from that investment is the goodwill and connectivity that the chamber can provide. When it comes to clarity, transparency with the chamber, again, I don't, you're not hearing an argument from me to not be clear with finances. So however the council wanted to put some sort of protection in there, I don't think that's a problem. Only other thing I want to challenge you just a little bit, this is a personal thing, and this has to do with Wampeuk citizens itself. You said, hey, I hope that everyone here has at least two months of income for a rainy day. Just a reminder, Wampeuk is the poorest community in the county, and most of the people in this community, just look at the numbers of median income, there's no way they have two months of income saved. People are living on the edge, paycheck to paycheck, and barely getting by. So much so, that a lot of people don't even have money to go to the beach here, they don't even have money to go spend in Santa Maria, because they can't even afford to go. So again, that's where my push is. The chamber does create a lot of that atmosphere in this community, where people can just get out and enjoy themselves. The city could take all of that over, but it doesn't have a great track record of being an event coordinator across the board. I go to, I drive past the Saturday markets, we thought was a great idea. It was full three or four years ago, now there's like one or two booths, but there's always a city booth, it's staffed, the city took it over. I'm not saying they can't do a great job, but they're not functionally set up to do the job that the chamber was able to do. So, I don't care how we get there. I think we can get there. You've mentioned two or three ways, but I'm in the minority, so council will have to figure out what interests them.
Can I just comment to that, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I just have to comment. One, if I offended anyone in the city, I certainly didn't mean to intend to. I think every financial advisor book would suggest that you, first thing you do is put away a little money to, for emergencies. And it's true that cities don't make money, but the difference is, companies end up with a called retained earnings, and cities put it in reserve. That's, that is their profit margin, and adding to the reserve is how they collect that. So, that's the one. Again, if I offended anybody in this city, I certainly didn't mean to.
You ready to go home? All right. So, let me get back to the budget book we got here. I may have spent multiple, multiple hours up till 2:00 in the morning going over this book. I spent many more hours again today on it as well, been, spent a kovish amount of times with staff. Appreciate you guys' time, I just want to, let me get back to the book, some of the things I found in here, and I think we can try to find some money, all right? Without going, I think, we went down that slope before about how many positions we hold or freeze, and that's one of the, I don't think we want to go to that. 27, I think, we got to be very careful about that, because that isn't a goal. We want to get all the positions filled. It's just, you're trying to give some, I don't even like 27, you know, because that's, means the services aren't being provided publicly. But there are some areas in here I think we can find some. And I'll be gentle with you guys, but I didn't see three Teslas, but I saw two Teslas. So, let's stop local, if we can, let's make that as, we always have that statement, we have three-car dealerships in town, and I think we can get what we need in it not being Tesla's. Now granted, they're pool cars, so they're not all general fund money, there's a, there's a small portion of theirs, general fund, but those are $61,000 vehicles. When I saw that, I was like, ah! Like, on page 575 or something like that in the budget book, it was down deep and in a thin line. I can appreciate, people want to know where the money's going. The fire department is getting another fire engine in the budget book, it's going to take a couple of years to get there, but that's a million-dollar buy. And one of my objections is to see what's happening, where it went, how did we get such a tight budget? I do agree with what Councilmember Bridge says, is that there is, there's some extra put aside in professional services. We were able to drill down on one of them, we found some, again, those are allocated monies. It's not a lot of general fund money in there, but we do have a few of those that are out there. And I can appreciate when you get money for a grant fund, and the next year you want to try to hold that or more for a writer or grant position, but there is a little bit out there. But I think that staff is relatively frugal, but it was hard to drill down on some of those big numbers. The, what I did find is you have a cybersecurity, and it's through information technologies. Now, there's a conflict between what's in the book and what's in the CIP plan, because the book does distinguish that going over six years. And in the CI plan, it's expensing it $576,000 in one year. I wasn't able to get that locked in as a question, but it appears to me that, yeah, on this, on this, on the 1,500-page thing electronically online?
Okay.
Yeah. And then if you go back and you look at the CIP book that you just gave out, I believe it was, it's a six-year expensing, or was it the budget book? Yeah, there's a conflict in that number. That's one of them. There, in this budget book, and I don't think, I think we'll get something very close to passing tonight, we'll see what we play out with, but the, the, I didn't see anything in the book that allowed you to, seeing more money to allow us to superstaff the PD, but you said that you were going to be doing that to fill in, as you see, so you're able to get there, so it's a head nod, yes. I did find the fire station remodel, that was actually in last budgets, money set aside. But we're paying for it this time, so that was one of those carryover numbers that's coming across. And that's for Station 1, new kitchen and doors and windows, correct? I believe.
It's actually not to that extent. Yeah, that money is tied up in an RFP process. It's also been about seven decades since we've replaced the kitchen.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with you.
I'm not arguing with you.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to find out.
Yeah, that's exactly what it's.
I was trying to find out where the money was.
That's where it's at.
So I found it. So, good deal there. The, the, they keep referencing capital projects in electric. It's actually referenced in the city manager's statement. We spent time over utilities to try and outfind out what they were. When you increased utility, electric rates, there was predicated on tens of millions of dollars with the projects, things going out to bond. But I haven't seen it, and I know hypothetically, potentially, there is, with electrification of the city. And that could be a lot of money, but when I see statements like that, it makes me wonder, what are we doing? Where are we going with this? There are some issues that I think we need to be observing in here, and trends that are going through. As an example, IT and communications has gone up 92% in five years, expensing. Some of these things are not sustainable. These growth curves are not, we have another one that's gone up 100% in 10 years. And if we anticipate these going up, and these are big, these are, these are millions of dollars of movements. And I think IT went from about 2.5 to almost 5 million in the five years, IT. These are things that we're, they're getting ahead of, without a doubt, revenues. When we're looking at 4% and 5% annual increases, we have this, these huge things that are happening. Again, getting back to electrical, electrical's gone from 24, 25 million a year, it's going up to $36 million in five years. I mean, where's it going? And I see there's a huge professional service, and I appreciate that you guys drilled down on the big, heavy document, but it, there's trends there that we have to be mindful of. And expressing these, that if this happens again, the people are not going to be affording things. It's a huge sucking sound of the local economy, and that's another $10 million being pulled out of the local economy, going in the different directions it is. I know some is in allocations, some is in enterprise reimbursement and rate of return, some was when electric rates went up, but actually, electric rates, or wholesale rates down a couple million dollars a year in the purchasing, correct? Yeah. So we're on the trend down, so. But I've got a couple of things that we could do that I think should be in there. I would like to see a table identifying in the budget book, and you put it in the city manager's preview, where he talks about enterprise reimbursement. But I was told you couldn't put it in tabular form, or in whatever program you have, but you could make a table identifying enterprise reimbursement and ROW that are being processed out of the utilities. It does, it is a comment, you can drill down in the 1,500-page document and find it, but I think we should identify in the book that number. One of the things that astonished me, again, looking, trying to find out where the money went, you have an alarm contract that seems to be going out of control. Right? As an example, in here, the civic center alarm contract's going from $23,000 to $42,000 a year. And I think across everything around, fires went from $50,000 And I think across everything around, fires went from $5900 to $17,000, PD 11 to 26, facilities 4 to 14. I talked to you guys, you're aware of it, I hope you guys can get that wrapped up, but that's a huge 60, or 80 to $100,000 that's.
This is definitely on our high priority list of what we're, what we are evaluating and analyzing.
Okay. Another item I think people need to understand, people want to know where the money went. And I know, I think we need to be here back and show us what our benefit aspect is, and that's the regional dispatch aspect. And it's gone up to $360,000 a year. I don't know if the council knew that, that's general fund revenue. People want to know why we're done with $70,000 to go through at this end of this year.
The budget originally was going to be $400,000 a year, that was what was originally presented. The, the reason it was only 70 in the prior years is because we didn't start until, I think it was.
It was 30, 30 in the previous year, but.
So, but it was for one month, maybe two.
Sure, sure. I'm just saying, when we make the decisions up here, we need to be mindful, the limited amount of money we have makes us have to do drastic decisions in other areas. And we sit back here and wonder where the money went. I think it's important that we know, and the public knows, what we're getting and what's happening. But I think it'd be important for a discussion. Let's see, and I'll get along with some of these others here. There is, again, getting back to some of the professional service categories, as an example, parks and urban forestry, it's going from $160,000 to $304,000. That's, that's a big jump, and whatever it is, I couldn't drill down what it was exactly. I'm sure you guys, they had a reason for going that, but that's a misere or a general fund aspect, or could be potentially electric that's funding the urban enforcement. These are some of the, we talked about a lot of the other anomalies I saw out there, but those are some of the, the big ones. I think an item I would like to see that's put in this budget, we can do it through this way, it'll come back with another agreement, and that is reducing the contracts that we allow the city manager to sign. I think it was, it used to be 75, went to 100, I think with all the engineering, has modified that to 220 and going to 240,000. I think we should have that level of budgetary control and reduce it down to 100,000, reduce it back to where it was, as it appears to be going up. In this, in this budget, I think that the public shouldn't be supporting jobs, people from a 4-10 week. That's four days, 10 hours a day. I don't think we should be funding items like that. People can't, you're gonna burn them out with 4-10s, and the public likewise isn't able to access people on that. I believe COVID's over, and I believe people should be back working here, working at the city, not working from home. I don't think the budget should be financing that and give you a 10 or 20%. Granted, there are times when people have something, it's gotta get there. But I think we should be minimizing the work from home details. I see less and less of it than since I first got on, seven months, six months ago, but there still is, it makes it difficult for everybody to work together when somebody's not here. I'd like to see in this budget, we've been asking for it, and that is taking about $3 million of the carbon credit money and giving it back to the people. It is restricted in what we can do, but I'd like to see a rebate going back to the, to the rate payers. That'll still give you $3 million in the carbon credit money, but that money's been sitting there for six or seven years, and I think getting it back in the hands of the people would be significant. Divided amongst the meters, it'd probably work out to about $240, $250. I'd also like to see that, because AMI meters keep resurrecting until we get more information on it, if you want to add it on, but it appears to still be in a capital improvement plan from a while ago, but it resurrected again at the last utility commission meeting. I think there's alternatives and a lot of questions that came about, but you would have to go off to a new RFP anyways. I didn't see in the capital improvement plan here, I don't know if it's still in, because it was in one from four years ago, is that, do we know where it is now?
It's deferred.
Is it gone?
It's deferred.
It's deferred.
We don't have the funding for it, so it's in the back of the book.
Just like the carbon credit, it's, it'll come back to council.
All right, well, because it didn't, it resurrected, it came about without really anybody knowing about it, I don't think. Or was it buried a couple of years ago, and then it just went out to RFP?
So I believe that what happened is that it started as a smaller project, and as it grew, it needed to go out to RFP in, because it was over the thresholds for purchasing. And so it went out to RFP and, and was agreed upon, we went through a whole process for the RFP on that.
Yeah, I saw the RFP was actually for water and electric meters.
It, it was primarily electric, but looking at the option to be able to add water on at a later date.
The RFP, anyhow, I mean, that's $4.6 million that was going to be going out to be spent in the public, and we didn't really have much to say about it, or, and I appreciate you guys being very transparent now, but I think we, when we do projects like that, we need, we need to be fully transparent, okay? That was a big bite, that was $4.6 million that was gonna go through. So I think in this budget as well, I'd like to see some money set aside to look into investigating asphalt, sidewalk and asphalt repair. It would probably have to be a specific tax, and I want to make sure there's something in there that I don't want it to come down. I mean, we all know that our roads and sidewalks need to be fixed, and I think at this, I want to make sure that there's, I don't, is there gonna be some money set aside somewhere that we could do that? Anybody? I just hate to see it happen, we want to talk about it, then we say we don't have any money, so we defer it, but we know we're gonna have to do something with it. You brought up a proposition with three employees, and you said that wasn't, didn't appear to be financially viable, but I think having that in there as well for discussion.
So I know that we have several projects in this capital improvement program for streets and roads, and there's a curb and sidewalk project as well. I can try to find it and point it out exactly.
I saw.
Okay.
My, my concern is, we have 57 blocks in this town, there's zeros. The PCI is zero. And we have to address that, or we're not gonna be driving down those. We know we have a lot of sidewalks in this town that need a lot of assistance as well. And our PCI, we're doing what we can, but we know what's gonna happen with asphalt. If, trend is, it was going down, oil was going down, it just went back up, of course. But if we can see oil get down to that lower level, it'd be advisable, I think, to, to jump on getting a mass repair going, because in 10 years, asphalt's not gonna be, we probably won't be able to afford it, especially when they stop drilling and everything else in the state, so I think it's advisable we figure out on something fast.
Now, is that something that you're, you're wanting us to bring back at a future date, or try to fit into the budget?
To make sure there's money in the budget, set aside in the budget, a line somewhere that we can get there. That's all I'm saying. We good? Well, if we have to have the discussion to even, even do it, wouldn't be a CIP, it would be a discussion for asphalt.
Okay.
I've seen it before, when we tried to do it, we'd say, oh, it's not in the budget, so we can't even talk about it. Will we be okay, city manager?
We can bring it back for discussion. It'd just be staff time to write a staff report and bring it back. I don't think there's any.
There might be. We might need some money for implementing, we need to feel it out and see, see the alternatives that are out there.
Yeah, we would bring it back in and tell you how much it costs to put it on the ballot measure.
We, otherwise, we just keep talking about asphalt, and we never get anywhere with it. We, I'd mentioned it before, and I did get a consensus of freezing the enterprise reimbursement and the ROW as per the HFNH study, but I didn't see it in the book, saying that it was frozen.
I don't believe that we specified it in the book, that it was frozen. I can add that language in there.
I would like to see that language in there. Couple other things, I'm almost there.
Okay.
It just says there'll be a new study done.
Right. So we're committing to do a new study?
It says it will be continually calculated based on the prior enterprise cost of service study conducted in '15. Doesn't say frozen.
Okay. I will change that.
It's on page seven. And I know, I know, I'm getting there, but I'm tired as heck. Energy drinks wearing off. So I think it's important also referencing in the manager's statement, the $7.1 million net income in the electric enterprise. But again, it does reference before capital expenditures. Again, what are the capital projects? I see him, I just want to make sure there's no other surprises that are lingering out there. Because I know when the rate was, was approved, there was a $70 million looming project, and we were gonna bond it, and it was gonna be $5.6 million a year in payments on it. Is that, there's nothing, okay. I just want him, for the record, because unaddressed infrastructure demands, that's also said on page, on page nine, that references in there. So going down to the water utility, it talks about unrestricted cash levels are low for the water, but it doesn't reference the $7.1 million loan that water has given out to solid waste. And we wouldn't be saying that if we had another $7.1 million identified in the water, I don't think we could make that statement.
We're making the statement based upon net revenues versus expenses, so.
It says unrestricted cash levels are low. And having another $7.1 million, I think we wouldn't be making that statement.
Yeah, we can change that.
Okay.
What, what page is that on, again?
That's, that's page 592. No, number nine, just teasing. We'll get to that one later.
I'm like, what the?
I was there before. Guys are killing me on this book, I tell you. I like to read, but getting this is rough. I think also, as you identify in the wastewater utility, our last discussion, we had $13.1 million in reserve the last couple of months ago when we were talking about that, but you don't really identify, it says, you're comparatively stable financial position. I think if you've mentioned that there's 13.1, what I look at is, I go, I went back and read 25 years of budget books, and I think it's important to see the model where you are, and just saying that you are comparatively stable financial position, I think if you said you had 13.1 million bucks in there, that would be a great identifier for people to see what, what's going on. And I, I would say that's, that's really not comparatively stable, I'd say that's a lot of hard work, but there is a ton of capital projects that are going out in wastewater. I mean, that's probably some of the biggest projects are going out there. Although the capital improvement plan, I didn't see, you're talking about a liner, but it doesn't identify what kind of liner, the middles of the liner or anything, it's got a very, very, and we've been talking about that one for 15 years, the liner for, for wastewater. Is likewise as well, the solid waste utility, we understand what has been going on, unrestricted cash is minimal, staff will continue to restrict expenditures and deleverage discretion of capital where feasible. Though you've been buying trash trucks, and I appreciate that, because we had, was that the one, we had the $11 million, and it was really, you were able to move $9 million out of that, because there were projects we weren't gonna do? But anyhow, we're buying two trash trucks every year. Are we receiving two trash trucks every year? Are we just expensing them?
We're, we are, we have financed them. I'm not sure what the question is again.
Are we receiving, are we receiving them?
Yes, they are being delivered.
Okay, okay. I know, I know, I should have read the whole book, huh? So when you get to page 41 on the levels of budget.
Can I ask a quick question here?
Yes.
Because you're not bothering me at all, so.
Okay.
Don't take it that way. I have 26 pages of these kinds of things. You remember on my chart, I said something like, let's not let perfect be the enemy of good enough. Is this going, are we suggesting that these are going to be implemented between now and when our next special meeting is? Or are you suggesting there's a big comeback to his action, but we're gonna pass the budget? I just would like to get a feel of where we're.
What I'm looking at.
Not discounting all your stuff.
I'm looking at things that I feel that I need to be in here and recommendations that making it.
Okay.
So it's an approvable aspect.
Cool, then it looks to me like.
And I'm trying to stay at the 100,000.
Yeah, so it seems to me that we're all recognizing, because I've made a bunch of suggestions tonight, too. It seems to me we're heading for another meeting. Would you agree with that?
Quite possibly.
Okay.
So, if I can get down here. All right? Okay, so on page 41, when we're talking about, and I appreciate you aligning the code 32460, because I think we're aware that it's probably been 30 or 40 years since that was aligned, right? But on the level of budgetary control, I think, when they're talking about, this is the limiter that allows the departmental change. We spend all this time setting budgets at department levels, and then when we find out a year from now, that what we did just went out of proportion. And this is where I wanted the limiter, so that you come back and when you need it, which you did put in here, but I think you could add in there and reference the code 32460. We used to do that, and that way it gave somebody a place to go and look on the level of budgetary control on page 41. I know we have, do it in the resolution, but I think it's important when you're reading this, people go back to the code. And then obviously, you're going to align the resolution as section six, you're gonna correct that and align that with the code. It's the one from the previous budget, page 43.
So, yeah, the one that's in here is a placeholder, we have to put in the certified copy, the new one is in the packet, the staff report packet, and the language is in that one.
Just wanted to make sure that, okay? Almost done, almost done. Again, I tried to stay at the $100,000 mark. So I found it very peculiar, we had a summary of full-time position adjustments, and then today I've got the summary of personnel changes. What I liked about the summary of full-time position adjustments was you had the dollar value next to them. If we're approving this today, we didn't have the dollar value that we just got today.
So the dollars are embedded in the budget itself on each personnel line. And so we didn't, we didn't call out the adjustments to the financial pieces in the personnel part, because it had both personnel positions and equities. All of that is in the, each line item within the budget.
Yeah, it's in the 10,000 lines, I get you. But we got this six weeks ago, with the dollars in there, and I think it's, I think it's good. I think this, this format should stay, not, not the format that doesn't. And here's an example why, as an example, it says fire, zero. Below it says, and another zero. What did we do? If you could look at page 60, it doesn't say anything. So we approved in a budget, fire, zero. So we approved in a budget, fire, zero, zero.
Right, it's a, I believe that that's a title change?
No.
Or there's, there's something in?
If you go, if you go back to the, the one we had before, it says what we're doing, it says fire. It has zero combined positions and zero, but it says total fiscal impact including equity adjustments, $37,000. In this thing, we're approving nothing. We approve fire, zero.
Sorry, my battery died. Didn't think I was talking that much. We're going to need to bring all those back, all the position and equity changes. If it, if you'd like, we will just bring it back and you can approve it when we bring it back.
Well, I, I would like to see this page in the book that has the, the dollar value, it's going, this is much more descriptive. Rather than tell me to find 10,000 lines of code of where it is. I think it's important for us to see in transparency this document that you, we got six weeks ago. But likewise, yes, I think when there's changes in stuff, you're going to have to bring them back because we don't have the description of the new jobs that we're approving, and you'd have to bring that back anyways. But I think what you're doing here does need to be brought back to council. So I'm making that, that reference, must bring this back to council.
And normally we do that, we'll bring them back, any, any changes in position.
I want to make sure.
What, what I'm understanding you're saying is that you want the page that talks about the person, the position changes to include the dollar values that are, that, just like that page there.
The one we got, whatever, six, eight weeks, what, I didn't, do we have a date on it? I mean, I've got like 3,000 pages of stuff, so if you're keeping everything together.
No, yeah, right, I, I understand, and...
I don't have a date on it when you gave it to us, but this is very descriptive, I appreciate this.
I, I, from a perspective of creating a budget book, generally speaking, the position control page does not typically include the equity adjustments in it. I had provided that specifically for council to be able to see what the impacts were. But I don't know that having it in the budget book on the position control page is the accurate, i- is the appropriate place for it.
And again, one reason why I'm referencing again, approving something, it does not look, it doesn't look good at all. Fire, zero, zero. And this one here has got the fire, zero, zero, but 37,000, and we know there's equity. But there's, there's nothing referencing anything at all.
Right, and I, I think that in, on that one, we probably should have just removed the fire piece on that because we weren't changing any positions in fire. Because the, the purpose of that page in the budget book is to talk about positions, not necessarily the dollar values that go with the positions.
And I, and I don't really know what the equity adjustments were either. I don't, I've got two different things, what they, I was told they were.
Well, we can, we can sit down with you and go over each of the equity adjustments.
I spent an hour today trying to find out, and nobody could tell me. I got multiple stories of what they were, so I don't know. Okay? I tried. I did, I did today. But it was a $37,000 expense. And again, I'm trying to find out. You put it in front of me, I'm going to read it, and I think you found that out. So another item that I find that is not sustainable, and, and again, I'm not asking for a change in the budget. I just think it's very important that we realize where the money's going. And, and that is the affordable housing in lieu. When our actuals in 2024 were $103,000 for personnel, and in 2027, they're going to 359.
Now, and, and so what that is, I can actually explain that. We have, um, it, it is a mechanism for multiple funds. We moved the, the budget out of 244 and 245 for the personnel and put it all in, in the, I'm using the terminology of the, the fund numbers, into 237. But then if you notice, there's a credit of the, in 237 that wasn't there before. That's the 244 and 245 reimbursing 237 for its portion of the operating expenses. It's, it's a functional change so that we can more, be more streamlined in how we are reimbursing from CDBG.
So it's 103 to 240 then?
So it, it isn't because that you have the credit on...
I took the credit out from 350, minus 114, that puts us a little less than 240, but, but again, so it's a doubling. But I guess we have a new position going there? Is that what we have?
No, if you look at, at, at community development, instead of in lieu, you're going to see that, that the salaries went down in 244 and 245. We just reallocated those over to 237, which is the housing in lieu. And, and then that housing in lieu is being reimbursed from 240, from the CDBG funds.
All right, well.
So it, the, a total amount of salary hasn't increased amongst the, amongst the three funds.
Again, like I said, I'm just trying to stay way high up there, this was, well. I know it's the children's library and we don't touch the library, but I think it's important to understand what we've got going on. And personnel expenses are going from 130 to 252. So that's, that's a big...
So we, there is a new, um, there, a new position that's being funded by one of the trusts, is my understanding, that it's the trust, the...
I just, again, I'm not asking a change or anything like that, it's just pointing out some of the things. Because when we sit back, we wonder where all the money went. And granted, this is, comes out of another fund, we have a lot of those multiple funds, I get it. But I mean, those, those are, I mean, I only have really about 10 or 15 things directly to the budget, others were just... I want to get out of order here. Probably did, didn't I? So it's actually, what I mentioned about the cybersecurity was actually in the new CIP book that we got an hour before the meeting, that you identified out $96,000 a year on page 19.
The CIP book?
Yeah. And there's 576,000, but you put it in a single-year placeholder? And how much of cybersecurity do you think is allocated, how much of cybersecurity is allocated to general fund?
You know, I don't know the number, that number off the top of my head. I, I have spreadsheets with all of those calculations.
Right there in the middle, cybersecurity.
I'm trying to...
Let's see, page 19 of the new book.
Sorry, departments and communications.
Maybe we're on a different page numbering system. It says, on the bottom of the page, it says 19.
I'm trying to find the IT on here.
Oh, you don't have, yeah, makes it more confusing.
Wait, Ctrl F. It's right up for electric distribution. There we go. So what is it, we're looking at the, the cybersecurity agreement, 90, 90, sorry, 96,000 each year?
Right.
The next, during each of the six years.
Right, so if you go to the budget book, it says 576 for 26. Expensed it all in one year.
So the total expenses for, for, what page is that on, on the budget, just so I can reference that?
Oh my goodness.
Do you have that? I can, I can look, look.
It's, it's...
On IT? Let me see if I can pull it up right here. Got it.
You find it?
Yeah.
I didn't write page number, I just, I just found it in the, the CIP book that we just got, so that's why I didn't bring you that question before. But the curiosity is, again, is if, I'm sure a component of that is general fund. And if it is dispersed over six years, not in one year, there might be a, some general fund running revenue in there.
I'm, I'm just trying to find it so I can reference it. It's a lot of lines, isn't it?
Oh, you know where, you know where another place it is, is, it's, it's expensed here on your capital projects list. It's on the thousand-page document. It's, I can't tell you the page number, but it's actually on there. That gives it a 2026, well, does 26 to 31.
So, the 96, I'm, I'm going to pull this page over here. This is the line items within the communications.
Right.
And you can see over here, the 96,000 each year is here. The total projects is 689. That's also including the fiber, the, the fiber lines, 593 and 529 each year. That is the, that is a big one-time project of laying the fiber that is, it would, it just, it really needs to happen. And, and so that was, we included it in this budget, but it isn't an ongoing expense after we get it laid, the fiber laid.
So the installing the fiber to complete city for 1.587 million dollars, how much of that is general fund?
So the reimbursements from each of the, the departments is down here in the cost allocation charges? And the, well, hold on. I apologize, I'm, I'm apparently running out of steam. And so, here we go. All of the, the credits from general fund, it was, is 291,000. That's for the whole, the whole thing.
For the million five?
Per year, yes.
You know, it's a million five for over three years, but you're saying...
Right here on this line here is the, the credits from the general fund. Now that's for everything though, that's not just for the, the million, that's, that's for...
Oh, 300,000 a year for general fund?
Correct. But that's for all of, it's, for the, its portion of the salaries and all of the different fees.
So what, I don't, what is the fiber project?
Um, I can defer...
My curiosity is, it's like we have to do this, but I'm just wondering, why didn't we have to do it before? Because we have most of the town already with fiber?
I, I'm going to defer to my IT manager who is here, and he can speak to that.
So what we had is, right now, we have about five to six locations that are connected via our wireless, our broadband. And what's, we want to do is to complete the rest of the city, specifically those six locations with fiber. We do have fiber throughout the rest of the city for our structures and our facilities. But what we're trying to do is get off of our wireless for those because we need to increase the security, we need to increase the speed. We're having issues with latency. It's all going over the wireless, and we need to get onto fiber in order to complete that structure.
And we can't hook onto Frontier or something like that?
That incur, that incurs additional fees every month for leasing dark fiber. And that, that's something that we looked into, and it's not, it's not feasible for us. It's not economically feasible. It's over long-term, if we purchase the fiber, it's our fiber, we've laid it, there is no recurring cost after that.
So I, again, what I, what I'm getting at is, I'm just looking at the mandated mandate, it's, trying to figure out where the money all went. All right? And this is something that we're coming up with, and again, I'm just trying to drill down a little bit, is, you know.
The real, the other question you could ask, is can it be spread over four years instead of three?
It can definitely be spread out.
There's a real question.
Yeah, it can be spread out. This was just, this was our initial project, yeah.
No, I, I got you, I'm just, again, I was trying to look at things that were new to the game and what, what we had going on, so.
Yeah. And, and to explain the 96,000 for the cybersecurity, basically what that is, is the security operations center. What we're doing is, I, I think we all said a question about a position in my department being added as well. And basically what we're doing is, one of the biggest threats to our city, which is ongoing, is cybersecurity. And it's not a matter of if it's going to happen, it's a matter of when we are going to get, get, get attacked. And we're trying to leverage ourselves to be prepared for that. So right now, basically cybersecurity is being handled by myself and by my system administrator. Unfortunately, we have a lot of other duties, and unfortunately, some of the cyber, cybersecurity and the security of our city is not being addressed. And so there's a two-pronged approach. Basically, when you're looking at cybersecurity, you can either outsource cybersecurity and have it all being done externally, or you can do it internally, or the best solution for our city is to do a hybrid. You do part of it externally with a, 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 um, external security operations center, which is basically a 24/7 center who's monitoring all of our traffic and all of our logs to make sure that nothing's getting through. And then we have somebody on staff who's actually a security person on staff, who's local, can respond to things immediately, can respond quicker than an external part of it can.
I'm not, I'm not going to harsh you on your, your person, your staff, without a doubt.
No, no.
Yeah, without a, what am I...
Yeah, but the other cost is over six years, it's, it's 96,000 dollars a year, that's an annual cost. It's not going to be all upfront, and that is annually each year.
Okay.
What fund is that coming out of?
Uh, that is actually...
That's in the communications fund, it's an internal service fund, so all of those costs get divided out proportionately to all of the other funds in the city. And so...
We provide services, right.
I hear you say that's the general fund portion?
There's a, there, that would be the general fund portion for all of the, um, the costs within the, and, and...
So, I, it's hard for me to read that, but is that 26, 27 total? Is that what I'm, what, what are the three columns for?
So this is, this is 22, 20, it, the credits are, are, are hard to show in the actuals of past, but we can look at these. Are the current, um, the offsets to, I, I think these are the different, this, this is 25, this is 26, and this is 27.
So that's 25, 26, 27?
Right.
So is that coming out of the general fund?
This line here is the general fund, yes. This is a reimbursement from the general fund.
Before we get beyond that, you told me you could spread that out.
If we spread that out further, we could, we could do that, and, and...
And we would capture 75K?
Correct.
Let's go do it. I mean, we're scrambling for...
That's, yeah. But that, that's there, and they had more on the other side.
And, and we would have to go in and redo those calculations and get that spread out, and, and that's something that we could do this week if, if that was the direction of council.
Oh, I guess, from my perspective, any of those things we can do to bring some revenue, potential revenue, or whatever, whatever's the right term here.
Reduce, reduce the expenses to the general fund.
Okay, thank you. And capture some of that money in this year, which to me, I've been pretty clear, I'm very nervous about this year. That, that would double about the, the margin that we've got right now, right?
So if we can, if we can spread that out over a longer period of time, that would increase the, um, the buffer that we have in the general fund, yes.
Double our margin. So, I always, I should think, I, I would think we should go look at anywhere that occurs. Go run an algorithm on the spreadsheet and say, anytime we have that kind of condition of more than 100K a year, you know, some number, let's look and see if we can spread it out over another year. I, I know we'd like to get things done, don't get me wrong.
Right.
But that seems like a no-brainer to me, I don't know. You're all right, you're all right. Councilmember Ball's ready to jump, you ready to jump on that one?
I'm, I'll be, I'll be quick.
So, in, in talking with, with Dean, keep in mind that this, this number, this 291, is not just the fiber line. That is the salaries, that is everything within, within the costs, this is the, the general fund, um, right? And so, so I don't think that it's going...
Am I hearing you say, am I hearing you say that, um, the salary will just go to another spot on the general fund?
No, what I'm saying is that it may not reduce as much as you, as we think, is that if it's 20% of the cost of the fiber, so if, we were looking at about 600,000 a year, is what I, if I'm remembering it correctly, was like 500 and, I have it in front of me somewhere, 569. So about 20% of that is what Dean was saying, he, he remembers those numbers off the top of my head, I have to reference the spreadsheet. But 20% is covered by the general fund. If we were to spread out, let's just round it to 500,000, rather than over two years to over three years or over four years, that might save us 50,000 or so.
Well, the condition we're in now, 50,000 is five-sevenths of our budget.
We have to look at the, the cost benefit, right? On whether or not getting the fiber laid faster is more cost...
I understand.
And so that, those were the, the, all the factors that went into the decision.
What's not going into your calculations, that sounded really charged. What it appears is not going into our calculations is the algorithm I was talking about, recognizing that this month or this year, we're fighting over scraps at the top.
Well, and...
And so, if I had those on a spreadsheet that I could manipulate, I would run an algorithm, and if 10 of them came up, I'd be looking at all 10 of those and seeing where we could spread out. And maybe there's some in there that are only in two years, maybe some are in five years. I don't, I'm not questioning the effort, I'm saying it looks to me like there might be an opportunity to call back some money to this year.
I, I think that the, the only place where that would be possible is in the internal service funds. And so we can look through the capital improvement plan, and I don't know that we are as, you know, to run an algorithm, really what it is, is I'm gonna print out the spreadsheet and I'm gonna look at it and see where we can, that's the, the algorithm, right?
You're just running the algorithm in your head, is all.
Right. And, and we can do that for the internal service funds because they have a charge back to the general fund. But really, this was the one big project that I know of, that, I don't know that there's any more to go find, but I can go look.
I don't expect you to create any, but we found one.
Right.
So let, let's just go look and see if there's any others, please. Is that okay?
I think the only very difficult thing is when you start adjusting the internal service funds. They're allocated to every single fund, every single division, so you're adjusting 200 or 300, maybe not that, well, yeah, because they're different. You're adjusting a lot of the budget. It's, and then also, my concern is, we're just deferring some problems we're having with transmitting data. We were using the rabbit routers, and Jeff can probably add to this, but we're getting a lot of errors, and there's a lot of, it takes way longer to process than, we're having a lot of problems. So we're just deferring a problem, and I don't think it's gonna make a big impact on the general fund.
Okay, good. Here's what I would say if I was a jerky CEO, is, oh, well then, when we fix that, where you can get rid of two heads? Because that's what you're telling me, it's taking a lot of work to maintain it. Okay, well then, cool, I'll trade infrastructure for people. Otherwise, let's go get our money back in this year. That's where my head's at. You're gonna hear that refrain. Now, we're, we're heading to, I'll have another week to look at this thing, which is gonna just create work, but...
So, I, I...
From my perspective, you, you saw my chart, we should be taking that 70K to 500K somehow. And Jim's just spent an hour here on lower-level, really smart things, and some of those look like potential allocations of money in a different way. I'm not gonna say he's gonna say it.
We can go look at that. I think that, um, there is a level, you were, you were talking about the perfection being the enemy of good enough. We need to find where good enough, and I, I don't like saying that because I am a perfectionist. The problem is, is that, right now, there is not enough staff or hours to go to, we hit, we see all, everybody has their eyeballs on it, and that's great, but you, we can continue to look and find $50,000 here or move, but the amount of staff time that it's gonna take to redo a cost allocation is, I don't know that the return on that, with that 50,000 is, is...
Well, that's fair.
Do, I, I mean, I just don't know that it, would it be better to say, let's, if we do go over, that we could go into the reserve? I'm not saying that we should do that, I just, I don't know where...
Yeah, my, my uncomfortness, if that's a word, is, this budget has been developed, sometimes it can appear that this budget has been developed without concern of how bad we are this year and where can we save. And I pointed to it in at least a few places where I'm saying, that's an obvious pad, somebody's padded that. And we've, you just found another one that's, so...
I wouldn't, on this one, I'd argue that it's not a pad, I think that this is a...
I don't think this is a pad, I wasn't saying that was a pad. I'm saying I pointed to a few that I think are. Jim's found a few that he's going, why are we doing this? And sometimes we have a good answer, and sometimes we don't, so... But I am, I do call to the philosophy of, don't let perfect be the battle of good enough, but we've moved all the cushion over to staff. This process has, has, and you're highly qualified staff, but it sure doesn't leave us much latitude up here on the Diaz when you say, okay, here's your budget, it's good enough, we're, we're balanced, a lot of cities aren't, you've got, you've got nothing to play with, city council, you've got nothing to put your vision into play, it's all gone. And then we'll come back next year and say, oh, you know, we, we were cool, we came in 800K, better off than we thought we were going to. Well, that's, I don't wanna use cuss words, but that sure didn't help us implement any vision. So, and again, I don't wanna come across as critical, but I certainly think we're gonna have another week now, because of all those things that went in there, and what I did to you on the goals and objectives, which was totally unfair, but it's the time we had. I, it just seems to me we're heading for another week. Now, I would just soon, personally, cut to the chase and come, you know, I sent you a 26-page document today, you probably have not even had a chance to look at it. We spent three or four hours yesterday afternoon, I think it was yesterday. Rather than have everybody here struggle with all my, why does it do this, it would seem like it might be better to have a couple of those offline sessions, go through Jim's things, go through mine, anybody else has got them. That's my personal opinion, I'm sharing, I just feel like we're starting to wear each other out.
Right. I, I would, I would like to, to kind of review what I've heard and make sure that we're heading in the right direction. And as we're doing this, I think that there were questions that were brought up about chamber, and I would like direction on where, what we are gonna do with budget on that.
I have some questions whenever it comes back to me, since you guys have taken your three minutes, yeah. I'd like to have my three minutes, is that okay? Yeah, good. Councilmember Vega, sorry, man. I've been listening to all of this, and actually, I understand what a balanced budget is, and I appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing here. My question is to staff, would you want a little direction on what we're going to do, okay? As far as chamber, and if there's any money left? And I think the thing that I've gotten, the community outreach is, is, is really important. The younger people that have, you know, they're pretty passionate about what they've gone through and there's nothing to do. It's summertime right now, so I'm reevaluating my thought process here. And Jeremy Ball, you did mention, Councilmember Ball, about some sort of timeframe from which to get to one point to another, instead of being so abrupt and saying July 30th or June 30th is it, okay? I mean, that might be the most, the easiest thing to do if we can get there, okay? But with constructive notice to say, hey, guess what, this structure's gonna change, or someone's gonna have to scale back, say what can they do and what can't they do? Because sometimes what I think is, sometimes with the chamber, we're counting on them to do a lot. But are we counting on them to do too much? The same token, to where everybody's stressed out, to a point where, okay? You know it's, what it's like, we're going through this budget here, it's taking a lot of our time. So again, I'm an advocate for a balanced budget, but I see these guys' hard work and all of your hard work, and it sounds like if we squeeze the lemon, we can find a little bit of juice to get from point A to point B, maybe not a full contract, but to another point in time, when we get through the summer and maybe to our next budget review, so we can give us time. These guys are pretty good, everybody's pretty good here to find out where that money's coming from. But along with that, if there's, if it's possible, and I'm gonna ask, and this is a question here that I have, I also want the mural society funded. So if we're gonna find money for one, then we're gonna find money for the other one. I'm pretty passionate about things to do in Longbook. I haven't said much all night, these guys are, they've done a lot of homework. So I don't wanna discount what people are doing. Some of the compliance issues, that's something they can solve. We want a restructuring of accountability or something here that we can do. But the other question that was always vague to me was, if we're gonna be funding the chamber, and I know it might have been a, a gift issue or it might be something else, people have asked me, are the council members, are the chamber members? You know what I mean? You're funding an entity, but you're not part of that entity, and I'm not sure what the restrictions are legally to say whether it's a gift or we can't do it. You know what I'm saying, though? Because, you know, we, even if you're an honorary member, you're part of that fabric, which means you should have a little say-so. I know that I've attended some of those meetings, there were some of the meetings where I wasn't notified, because they probably have a lot of things to do. So I'm not gonna say it's all them, it could have been me, my schedule, but I just think that we could have done things better, instead of saying, you're the city council, you show up to the meeting, you don't get a vote. And, and I've heard this before, so we need to have a little bit more communication so that at least there's mutual respect. A lot of times, what I've seen up here on the desk, is there are people, you're mad, you're patted, you think no one's listening, but still, we gotta respect each other, okay? I don't like to be yelled at. I don't like to be told, hey, we're not gonna vote for you again. Hey, that's the way it is. We should be able to communicate as adults and be able to talk. But if no one's talked to me, is that my fault? Maybe, maybe it's half my fault. Or maybe it's somebody else who thought maybe it was gonna be a shoe-in, and, because we've had contracts that come up, and it's like June 30th, here we are today. Oh, you gotta sign it today, it's, it's gonna expire. I don't like that, you know? We should be thinking a little bit ahead of time until, instead of counting our ducks before we get there. That's respect. That's not saying, hey, guess what, we're gonna get funded, we're just gonna show up. It's not the way it works anymore, especially when you don't know the people. You know, there's people here that are pretty much budget hawks, they're good, they're businessmen, they know math, we're all looking at this. I mean, guys, this is just tonight. Look at this stuff, we're not just showing up and looking clueless out here and not making decisions. They're telling us that it's gotta be out of the utilities, or it's gotta be out of public safety, general fund, utilities are already high on it. The general fund is probably where this money is probably gonna have to come from. And then, so I need to ask this question of staff, and I think Dean's there, is there a way of putting a patch in, even if it's on a month-to-month or a short term, to get through the summer or get to a point in time where maybe it's not a, a full contract?
I just wanted to mention the time that we...
Okay, yeah, no, no, I thought you were wanting to talk to me, dude.
I apologize.
I was gonna give you three minutes or maybe one minute, I don't know.
All our microphones died, so I also, I also wanted to...
So we have to have an extension, okay?
I also wanted to say one thing, you know, you guys can adopt the budget the way it is, and I know you got good input, and I know everything that Mr. Mosby went through, we can incorporate it into this budget, and we can bring it back in a minute at any time.
So, Dean, my question is, okay, we have to do an extension of time. So the discussion we're having on the budget here and finding money, how does that incorporate into our decision tonight, or is that just kill whatever we're talking about in case we wanna extend it a few months or five months or six months?
You mean to continue resolution?
No, I'm talking about the chamber conversation.
Oh, the chamber, I'm sorry.
Mural Society, do you have a, a way of finding, some way to put a patch in it, or is there another amount that we maybe can do? Or are we just done right now to balance the budget, okay? I just need, you guys know.
If you guys wanna give us direction, we answer to you guys if you wanted to, I mean, when, when we bring a balanced budget forward, what we're saying is, if you wanna give something, put something out, you have to take something, I mean, give something out, you have to...
Understand.
I mean, we could do something and bring operating costs down, reduce what we're paying for other things, but that's a decision we'd have to...
So, is this something we have to tell you tonight, if we're gonna adopt this budget, or instead of having a special meeting next week?
I would recommend you adopt the budget. Even, we only got, what, seven days left for us to do anything?
Let me get to Councilmember Staubach to make a motion to extend the meeting.
Okay, I'm just giving...
Hold on, I got you, hold on, hold on, we gotta do before 11 o'clock.
What's the motion?
You made the motion?
I'm making a motion here.
Make it.
I'm gonna make a motion to extend the meeting to a half hour.
15 minutes?
I'm giving it a half hour because, well, me...
Oh, sorry, mic won't push, mine's not on.
He's playing with his mic button, he needs some glasses. Motion by Staubach, second, my ball, let's go ahead and vote.
My button doesn't work. Okay, now. Okay, now that we have an extension...
That passes 5-0.
Thanks.
All right?
Like a little clarification on where we're going with this, so we know what we're doing, okay? I know there was other times where we adopted something and it was too late to do anything, okay? Is that what we're doing right now? Huh?
No, you can always do something. You can always make a motion after it's all approved to change things. It's just the level of confidence you have to say you feel like you've got a plan. So, let me go to Councilmember Ball, he's been waiting patiently. Fire away.
Thank you, I appreciate that. First of all, nope, let's not pass the budget unless, until we have clarity on what we're gonna do with the chamber. I know for Dean and for staff, with all due respect, it'd be great, you guys have worked your butts off to try to get here, and there's just more work and more work, but again, my confidence to be able to come back and thread the needle after we already said, oh, then we kind of checked the box, it just becomes difficult. You guys helped me with a lot of the work that I probably should have put in here. What I'll say is that both of you, both of you, thank you, thank you. You have come up with so many ideas on how to find money that we could invest in the chamber and in the mural society, and maybe even more if we were creative. All I have to say is, I, I just wish that we had that creativity at the last meeting, because now, here we are, and yes, you've all heard it, there's ways where we could trim funds, we could be... funds, we could be more efficient, we could come up with the money, we could fully fund. We could say, come back with an audit in January, you don't get any more funding unless you gotta clean. We could do any of that stuff. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I am open to any of these ideas that help us tighten up, be more efficient, be more streamlined, and also fund the things that the community cares the most about. So I'm grateful for that. The only other thing that I'll say, because I, we could talk offline about a couple of questions, but Mayor Mosby, I'm gonna throw it out there. I know you snuck up on it a little bit, I know it's, but you talked about perhaps the idea of tax monies that could be allocated towards streets and the improvement. We've got horrible streets right now. So I'm just throwing it out there, just for creative discussion down the road, doesn't apply to this budget. But you're absolutely right, we have to keep enhancing revenue if we're gonna afford to keep service levels at the same. So I submit to you that you consider, generally speaking, a big beautiful bill for Lompoc. A big one. Whereby we come up with a plan that, yes, maybe you get 50 cents on the dollar for a sales, some sort of sales tax enhancement before the county comes in and applies their taxes and gives us nothing. And maybe I get 50 cents on the dollar that we can sustain, retain, and improve our public safety. Two of the items that the city cares about. What's that? Well, you have to go find it somewhere else or come up with an idea. But I, again, I appreciate the creativity that I'm hearing at this council level. I don't mind if we think big, I don't mind if we think differently. And honestly, I don't mind if staff's uncomfortable sometimes. We should have a good answer for it, and if we don't, gotta find a better answer. So I'm with you. So I'm just putting that out there, like if we wanna talk about the future, I'm open to it.
Put your seatbelt on for you, okay? You ready? Go for it.
I have one.
Oh. Hold on, let me get Councilmember Ridge.
Okay. So we received a red line contract from the Chamber. We rejected that red line contract by saying, well, we kind of accepted it, but we reduced the funding. It would seem to me the next step, if we really wanna move the conversation forward, would be a proposal from the Chamber as to what they would be wanting to do and what it would cost us. Because that's part of the issue here is, you know, we, I thought we had funded the events and we didn't get out of the room before it was, oh, we're canceling Old Town and stuff. But I purposely, it was events I put up there that was funded and we doubled that and waived all the fees. So if there's other things that you feel should be implemented and paid for, somebody should put it out on a piece of paper.
May I respond?
Okay.
I don't have it.
Go ahead.
I don't have any problem with that. I don't have any problem with that. But you gave the Chamber about a week to figure this out. Okay, so all I'm saying is like...
Well, I've heard that multiple times now and I have to respond to that because I went to the Chamber within a week of taking office and said, look, economic development is of great interest to me and if you guys can't get up to that, we're paying you $25,000 for that. I care about that. And I was, I went and asked to go to their meetings and I was told I can go and make a three-minute presentation and then I have to leave. So I don't, you know, it's been thrown out as accusations that we, that we did not communicate. I personally did communicate.
And I can appreciate, I think that there's a miscommunication here. What I'm saying is in the public forum, where there was the opportunity to have a transparent and open discussion about how we fund the Chamber or not, I respect you spending all of that time, but when it came down to the community having their input and us having a discussion up here, we spent, how many hours have we spent talking about nuance and details? We spent 11 minutes on the Chamber. So all I'm saying, in the public forum, we should have a lot more transparency. That's a two-way street. Yes, accountability, what's the Chamber gonna do? But you've put them into scramble mode. They either go out of business or they have to come up with a magical plan to fit your vision and then we'll fund it. Now, I'm not sure that's what the community was asking for.
Ready? Ready to hit? So it, this take of getting along and everything else of, the passion component that you have for it, I respect that and understanding of where you're going and from, and I will support you in finding, I think we've found enough avenues to get the Chamber that gap, okay? I mean, I know we have to get along and I know the passion is this, there's many times we have levels of passion, we gotta work together. And my point of fact is, I think I've found enough things, some in the Teslas, some of the professional service components. And I think that we can get to the level to do what you wanna do on there and to make sure that we do that. I would like support in the items that I've put forward here as well on that and add on to funding the Chamber in here as well.
So I'll definitely support that as long as you'll make every effort to make sure that we don't lose our entire finance staff because their hair is on fire and they can't think straight.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get this, I'm gonna make this tonight so we have it done so that you can chill out for a week. I don't wanna come back for another week. I know they don't want either. They've been working their tails off to four in the morning and everything else. So with the items that I put in there and adding one more thing on, and that was the ability for the police department to have these fancy little police cards that the people can pass out now instead of pieces of paper. You guys got it, we make these in-house, so if you can add that into the budget aspect, I think these...
Didn't we get some of those? Chief?
All right. I can't see it from here.
It's, I think we purchased some.
It's the business card they put their name on. Corporal Penney gave me this the other day. It's so much nicer than those scrap pieces of paper I get.
I think we purchased some, but we can make...
Can we, can we just add that one in there? Are we good? Are we good with that?
I'll support you.
All right, so I gotta, I, there, I may, you need something from me?
One thing.
Okay.
What is that funding level for the Chamber?
Well, as per the contract, as per the contract, they need to align with the contract. You're keeping the $32,000 in and give them, you wanna give them the 108, is that what you want?
I wanna give them what they've been getting, but I also will give you that if you guys wanna put some sort of parameter that, again, January 6th, we're coming back with a review and there's some accountability that we add in, again, I'm all open to all of it.
With a review January 6th to make sure that we can keep them going. This gives us, this gives us six months.
I think we should have a contract.
Well, we have the contract, but understanding...
Performance elements of it.
Well...
We should modify it.
We shouldn't just renew that contract. That's what got us in trouble here to start with.
Well, we have an audit component that has to be in there that we have, they have to comply with. I don't, I think we've gotta get that done.
I wanna performance.
Right?
Mayor, what we can do, we can, we can set the money in the budget and then pending negotiations of a contract, we would then have the money available in the budget to be able to meet that contract.
There we go. Thank you very much. You rescued me. Are we gonna...
So sure, and if the Chamber can't come up with a good answer, if we've already set the money aside, let's put it to the murals and do the right thing. How's that?
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay? Okay?
Yeah, and then with the, we need parameters.
If they can't do that, we can, if it doesn't work out, then the money can go to the mural. So mural still had $25,000 in the account.
The Mural Society has money?
They got money, yes.
Okay, you know what?
Okay.
But as long as the contract is modified so there's no vagueness, okay?
They're gonna come back and we're gonna get through that, we have the money set aside to get this.
We can modify the contract, but I'm still looking for the same number, okay? Because we're planning...
We can modify, but I think what happened here is it's a...
Now, this stuff's already submitted, so we can bring those things back. Important to add as we fill in.
But the compliance part of it needs, if there's any, and then we need to meet in the middle to make sure we're both okay with moving forward. You know what I'm saying though? Because...
I don't have any problem with that.
You okay with that? Trying to help, man.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I don't want these guys coming on their white horse and then find money. Because these guys are good.
So I guess I need to clear the air. Are we coming back next week?
So I'd like a clarification of what we think we've agreed to, so I'm gonna state it.
I'll defer to the mayor.
Is, we're going to establish a budget line that's equivalent to what the Chamber got last year. I apologize. We're gonna establish a budget line that's equivalent to what the Chamber got last year. I'm assuming that it's gonna be componentized based on performance criteria. For example, they redlined out the economic development. If that stays out, then the money that was allocated for that would go as well. If we're moving the contract for the, the business development consultants, if we're paying for that, then that stays with us. So that would come out if it was in there, and I'm not sure...
So we have the, the money for the consultant services is budgeted, but it's budgeted as an expense for the city.
I know, but when we get to the point where we're making the deal, we're negotiating an equitable contract here, that won't be in there because we're doing it now.
I have one more thing also.
And then we're going, let me finish. Then we're gonna establish a contract that has performance criteria in it and we'll execute the contract. That's the plan.
I think we should have a discussion about that. I think the Chamber should be asked on what they can provide. I mean, they're the first people to know what their flexibility is, their leverage and what they can do. So yeah, absolutely, let's hear from them too.
Yeah, I think the step is they come back with a proposal.
That sounds good to me.
Councilmember Vega.
And one more thing. Are you done?
Yes.
Okay, can I talk? Okay, thank you. Sorry, guys, I know it's not a comedy show, but we gotta break the ice a little bit. The compliance issue, if we're gonna change that, then the money needs to be changed also. Because if we're paying for some sort of compliance and all they have to do is send in a piece of paper to show that they spent the money, because they said there was some other way of doing this, since there's nobody looking at contract compliance with those couple of entities because they were exempt. We're giving $3,000 a year for, for some sort of an audit or whatever.
Don't pay for it again and ask them to comment.
Understand, I'm saying, because they're saying there's two years we're missing and they got $3,000 a year for the compliance part of it, which I think shouldn't pay for nothing.
I think the audit is a way for this community, the city, and the Chamber to rebuild some trust over time. But I, I'm just hopeful that we can stretch ourselves so that the Chamber can catch up, figure it out, and remain solvent. That's it.
And again, the clarification of, is it, is an audit required from them or we, are they exempt? You know, it was kind of a little vague there, what happened? We're giving money for something, then we exempted them? What happened there?
Mayor, Mayor and Council if I may.
Yes, please.
We're on the...
The agenda item, I have that one right there. The agenda item tonight is the budget, so...
Jeff, you have to be on my phone. Sorry.
What are we, did it be the electric bill or what?
Your one minute was up, no?
All of the batteries are dead.
I think those microphones are on battery and all the batteries have died.
This is our new system.
Come to the podium anyways.
This is the budget item tonight, so we should really just be talking about what dollar amount do we wanna allocate to the Chamber contract? And then when we bring the contract back, we can talk about all the terms of the contract.
Thank you much. So we, so we good with that?
And one more thing, I wanted to thank you guys. You know, you guys, we've all looked at this work and you know, guys, I mean, it's really refreshing and it's actually been explained to the public. Hey, we're, we're not, we don't have, we're not fat over here on the money. We're trying to make things work and be fiscally so we're not in the hole like some other cities. So I wanted to thank all of you that did the extra work.
Councilmember Ridge.
So assuming we get to this compromise of budget and we go forward, it's good enough because we never achieve perfection, is this approving the CIP book as well?
Yes.
And then the goals and objectives are getting approved?
So I have here a list of the things that I've heard and what I'd like to do if it's, if you wouldn't mind, is go through and which items we're going to actually change in the budget book and which items are tagged to come back to council at a later date. And I'd like to make sure that we have clarity on what those items are, so...
So that's a fair, that's a fair approach. My only concern is I keep hearing January or February and that just, because I have a feeling that the work I did today is not gonna get in this, it's gonna come back and I'm not interested in that coming back six months, I'm interested in it coming back in six weeks.
I think that we would go ahead and add it to the agenda, the upcoming agenda item list. It wouldn't necessarily be part of the six, six-month review, it would come back earlier than that.
We're gonna add it to this?
Correct.
No, I'm sorry, I have very little faith in that, so I want a date set when it's coming back.
We could do that as well.
So...
And I support that coming back sooner than later. It's a lot of good questions.
So six weeks seems reasonable for the goals and objectives to come back.
So...
If you're not gonna incorporate them now.
I would like to be able to have the goals and objectives that you have suggested go to the department heads for review so that they can discuss with you or with their staff on...
It's all fair.
And, and so those wouldn't be necessarily incorporated into this budget, but we could add them as an addendum after the fact.
Okay, and I'm asking that that comes back within six weeks.
So I'm, I'm just trying to think of the timing because if...
That would be August 5th.
August 5th? So that would mean that we would have to have a staff report in by mid-July?
Yep.
I'm compromised, I want them in now because I think they're as important as wrestling these $449 line items. So I'm willing to compromise with the group, but I don't wanna, I don't want it to be the handbook issue again that goes away for six months and we never resolve it.
Sure, and I'm not arguing that, I just wanna make sure that we're clear on what the expectation is. And so if we were asking it to come back by August 5th, then we would have to have staff do a review within the next two to three weeks. And, and we can do that.
All right.
And...
I'll make myself available.
The other things that I had heard, from, from Mr. Mosby, we are going to change the pool cars to not specify Teslas and we will bring the price, the cost down so that we are approving, or we would have in the CIP, the pool cars, but not Teslas. Is that correct?
I think you can do it for almost half that much.
Half that? Okay.
I think. I'm, I did, looking around and shopping with the three dealerships around, we should be able to get something in that. And you could also even look at a lease option, which is even better because the one lease has, they have a $10,000 rebate right up front. They like money back.
Might give our city manager a heart attack, but no.
He's all right with that. They have a buyout after three years or five years, most corporations do a lease option anyways. And just bake the payment over time, okay? But...
And I-
Do you guys think Teslas? Yeah, I didn't think so.
We're gonna put in a, a table that lists out the enterprise funds, the enterprise reimbursement fund.
The valuation and the ROW, that was all-
Right.
All part of the H and H study.
And I have, that we will, we will look in, we will check the professional services for urban forestry and see what that jump was for, and just make sure that that is not an error. But I, I'm pretty sure that that has to do with additional staffing. Yeah. And so, but we will check on that. We're going to put into the wording that we're going to freeze the enterprise reimbursement program on, and that'll be on page seven.
And the ROW.
That's all part of the enterprise reimbursement.
Yeah. Sometimes they get divided, yes.
Okay. I, I mean for the whole thing.
Yeah. Because you're doing your study, so.
Right. And then, on page 41, we will put reference to the code. And I think it's 32460. Is that, so, we'll make reference specifically to the code in the wording. Those are the things that I heard that we could actually effectively change in the budget for the final. There were some other things that I heard that you brought up, but that would require further discussion, and we would need to bring them back. And so, for example, the security alarms. That is something that we are looking at.
You're good on that one. You don't need-
Okay. The level of, of contract authority for the city manager. The idea of eliminating for-
You heard our momentum, okay?
What's that?
You heard, you heard my delivery on that. I know it's up to his level of authority, but you know where we're coming from.
Right. So, it's something that we can bring back. I'm just making sure that we will, that I clarify that this isn't going to be a change that's in the budget book.
Correct.
Other things that you mentioned, that I don't think that we can, will put in the budget book, but that could come back for deliberation or discussion, would be evaluating 410s, the working from home, the carb rebates.
I think we could actually put the rebate in the budget that just allows the capital improvement. Can we not?
I, I don't, I, I think that we have to have a discussion on whether or not, I mean, I would need to get a consensus.
I know we've been asking for it for a while. Okay?
I-
I'll leave it out of the budget if you can bring it back.
We'll, we'll bring it back as a staff, as a staff report in the next six weeks. And then the last thing I have is a discussion about asphalt.
I have a question real quick. I'm hearing a lot of things are coming back.
No, I just, the carb, yeah, we have things coming back.
Yeah. And is your intent to bring them all back within six weeks?
No. I'm sorry. I committed to the carb, the rebate. That was already on the, on the schedule, and that's already on my staff's radar to look at that.
So, when, when do we expect these all to come back?
I would have to sit down and evaluate the calendar and, and look at what our workload is. We are closing the year in two, in 13 days is the end of the fiscal year. And we're going to be starting all of our closing processes. And so, we need to-
What's the first, what's the first, Stacy, what's the first date? July?
July 1st.
All right?
July 1st.
And what's the second one?
The 15th.
The 15th. Can you have a schedule of what you're coming back by the 15th? And bringing it back, just, we're gonna-
A schedule of, of that? Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
You're getting really close to the deadline again.
And I think that that, I think that that was all, every, and then the last thing that I heard was bringing up the chamber contract to the full-
So, I wanted the regional dispatch-
Okay.
Coming back, so we know what's going on with that.
And I, I had a request for special funds. Clarity of special funds.
The restricted?
Yeah, yeah. And, and I had a subset, but-
Right. And I didn't, I didn't take notes on all, on, because it's written, it's in there, so.
Oh, it's in the letter I sent you.
That had the AMI meters removed from your capital.
It's in the, the deferred section, I believe.
Right, removed. And then you had asphalt, conversation about asphalt, asphalt. Make sure the money's in there, so we can discuss getting that on a document. Cards for the PD. Did we need to have that one in the budget?
That one I can take care of.
Okay. See that? We got that all ready.
Got you some business card, chief.
Oh, and the, the positions, all those positions to come back, the summary of position document.
He's talking, he's talking about the positions with the funding.
Oh, you want the funding in the budget book?
And I want that funding in the budget book. Right, Mr. Albro. Those numbers in there. Otherwise, fire gets nothing on that one. Lost $37,000 right there. Right? And I think that's everything that I had. I had, I didn't have a couple other lines. No, I think, I think we're good, right?
I hope so. We're good?
Now, we haven't get done with this. I just can get a week off.
Make a motion.
Huh?
Make a motion.
Oh.
Is this returning?
What?
Are you, is this a motion for the approval of the budget?
Everything, did it go? Yeah, it's my motion for the budget with those-
With all, with the conditions that we just mentioned.
And the chamber stuff.
And the ordinance.
And the, and the ordinance, the backs is with the, yes. Is that everything?
I, I think I got it.
Looking at the city attorney, did I, did I get everything? Should I put it all?
All.
Are we good?
I can't be heard, but I, I believe that is all. Yes. You're adopting, adopting the budget with the changes stated by Christie, the things to come back stated by Christie, and introducing the ordinance.
Can we say that on, on the record, please? It, it needs to be on the record. Sorry.
And the dates we agreed to.
As I understand the motion, it's to approve the budget with the changes stated by Ms. Donnelly, the items to come back stated by Ms. Donnelly, introducing the ordinance, and within the timeframes that the council directed to Ms. Donnelly.
Oh, you beat me on my, that was my motion.
You wanted to.
Yeah, you seconded that one. I just, did she wanna repeat it? All right, it's been moved to second. Go ahead, vote. There you go. There's past 5:0. See what we got here?
We only have four minutes.
Calmate. All right, moving on down. Any written communications?
Yes, there were several written communications delivered to council and staff and placed on the website.
Okay, oral communications, there are last two minutes to talk about, yeah, oral communications. I'm seeing it. How many people lining up? You guys had enough to say. You got more time. Where's the people who wanted more time? Lucky's. All right. See nobody rise? We'll close oral communications, come back to council comments and meeting reports. Councilmember Ball.
Uh, two quick, sorry.
Two quick things. Attended the Juneteenth event. That was great. Good to see the mayor there. Anyone else who attended, that was great. One is, I'm not even gonna say council requests, just a request in general. I was part of a council that voted. We spent a lot of money on redoing all of this, all of this system here. And it frustrates the heck out of me to get messages from lots of people saying they can't hear us online.
Comcast, not us.
Okay. So, whoever's fault it is, just make sure that you guys have a good defense for it. Because if it's our system that continually doesn't work, then maybe we need a workaround from Comcast. Just saying. Okay, it's not our fault. It's not our fault. Yes.
Um, yes, you have to be on, I'm sorry.
Come on up, come on up.
Tick tock, tick tock.
Two minutes.
Um, I did check with our communications with Tap TV. Again, it, it was a Comcast issue, and he did assure me that when the video is uploaded to YouTube and on the website, that the audio is there. And on our end, all audio was present.
So, I guess the only other follow-up question to that is, it sounded like people didn't, were not able to call in. Is that also a Comcast issue?
And so, that was an issue in, the banner on Tap TV had not been removed, saying that public phone calls, that we, that we're not doing calls, calls in anymore.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Vega.
Do you want to extend time? We got five minutes left.
I got two minutes right here. Councilmember Vega.
Nothing to report.
Let's do it. You got anything to report, Councilmember Vega?
No.
Councilmember Starbuck?
No reports.
Councilmember-
No reports.
Uh, quickly, my report. I did attend Juneteenth event, and I did attend those that were, the meetings I was dedicated to, LAFCO, and the mayor's and manager meeting. No direct expenses to the city. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting to 6:30 PM, July 1, 2025. No special meeting this week. I got a minute left. No, two minutes left.